Hello, Kormani. Malwene Kormani. Tumelangko Kormani. Huiyedach in Kormani. Good afternoon in Queenstown. (Singing) Oh, lotan doloa, kotiko e. Stalumdozas, bulela wamtanas.
Thank you Heavenly Father for yet another day. Siabulela tiklwe chundoba us tonilepti anbobsuku, sade sabu ya saibona lemini. We ask oh Heavenly Spirit that as we are about to start this meeting, we pray for your Holy Spirit. We pray that your Holy Spirit might guide us as we have this meeting. That your Holy Spirit guides us so that all decisions made here, you have breathed on them. And so that they may be in benefit of all your people. Allow us oh Holy Spirit to be truthful in everything we do. Guide us so that we may make decisions that will be, we will be able to uplift our communities and our country as a whole. Guide us Holy Spirit. We ask this in Jesus mighty name. Amen.
Seabongas, seabulela. Thank you very much, Rialabuha. Ikamalam gubongiwe, mpin oki kaba. Slalo we committee, yemfunde seseke loe parliamente. Sela paker, ekomanu namchane. Sesele kengetile siyakbelisa, ngayes ten cape, it's our last province. This is a second public hearing in the province we have started in Umthata, Isolo. So, we are closing in Port Elizabeth tomorrow. You are here because you understand why you are here. Department of Basic Education is busy amending its laws. The South African Schools Act, Kar 1996. So, siyaba facilitator la, kenomsa benze, sebenze la, seseova. Uba niti ni nani na, jengabashali, niti ni nani na, jengabantu. Mabakobe ikena bas amende. Or do you think that things must be left as they are? I'm going to ask the members of parliament, of the committee to introduce themselves at this stage.
Huiyemidach, Queenstown. Good afternoon, Kormani. My name is Marina Van Seil, and I'm just from the Eastern Cape. In fact, I'm in Burgersdorp, so it's only 140 kilometers to the other side, so I feel right at home here. I serve on the Sixth National Parliament, and I also serve on the Basic Education Portfolio Committee, elected here by the Democratic Alliance. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon. Malwene. Huiyemidach. This baya lakaromier te wes, maar it's baya cold in Queenstown. It's very, it's very nice to be here, but it's cold in Queenstown, extremely cold. My name is Bakoli Le Notada. I'm a member of parliament serving in the National Assembly, in the Sixth Parliament. Appointed to this portfolio committee on basic education by the Democratic Alliance, who are here to listen to your views today, to make a meaningful contribution to the Basic Education Laws Amendment Bill that will have an effect on our children's lives. And I hope to listen to some of those that we can represent them in parliament. I thank you.
Huiyemidach, allmal van Queenstown. Good afternoon. My name is Mari Sukers. I am representing the African Christian Democratic Party, the ACDP, the party that contends for the biblical worldview for 30 years. It is my honour to listen to you today here, and looking forward as well to represent your views when this bill is being debated in parliament. God bless you.
A good afternoon, colleagues and everyone. My name is Ronnie, and my father's name is Morwateka. I'm a member of the National Assembly during this sixth administration. Deployed into that parliament by the African National Congress. My home. Or before even I talk about my home, let me indicate that I was further deployed by the chief whip of the majority party, Mama Pay Me Majodina, into this all-important portfolio committee on basic education. Hence my presence here. My home is in Limpoopo, a land of peace, a land full of fruit of all different kinds. And my town is Thani. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and apologies upfront. We are actually a 11-member committee. Some of our members are on study leave. Some of our members are not feeling well. We know it's a bit flu season. So, we are proceeding with the number that we are having. I did say that this bill is a bill of Department of Basic Education. And I'm going now to ask Mr. Lebe from the department. He is the chief director in the Department of Basic Education to give us the aims and objectives of this bill. And then we will proceed once he has done that. This is Bella Bill, Basic Education Laws Amendment. It's not a portion bill. It is not a portion bill. It is Bella Bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chairperson, and greetings to honorable members. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. The Bella Bill seeks to amend some sections of Sasa, which is an act promulgated in 1986. From 86 to now, the country has been going through some changes which necessitate that we look at some of the clauses in Sasa and amend them. The bill which you have in your hand, it's a bill that focuses on the administration of schools in particular. It is not focusing on all aspects of the education system, but just the mere administration part of it. Which means when you look at the bill, you're not going to get issues of curriculum in there. So there's not going to be the NS, I mean the National Curriculum Statement. You're not going to get anything about the subjects and the teaching and the three-string model because all those are captured in other documents of curriculum. Which means you're not even going to get LO, which talks about sexual, sexuality, education, and things of that nature. They are not in the bill because the bill is about the administration and not the teaching and learning. You're not going to get issues of sports and extracurriculum in the bill. You're also not going to get infrastructure issues because those are captured in the Nonsense Standard of Infrastructure. So there won't be anything about renovations and the building of schools and toilets and all such things. We're only focusing on the administration of schools. The bill will not also focus on government challenges that we can start talking about potholes and ASCOM and all those which are not part and parcel of the education sector. So the bill is really focusing on how schools need to be administered. What you're going to find in the bill in particular is an issue around learner attendance, which the bill seeks to reduce the dropout rate. The bill begins to explain how school management teams and governing bodies working with parents need to deal with issues of absenteeism and thereby reducing the rate of dropout in schools. So it's a very big section on steps that management must take to ensure that children are at school. You're going to find in the bill a lot around the code of conduct of learners. Trying to ensure that the code of conduct of learners is aligned with all our cultural and religious diversities, that they need to be included and consulted amongst stakeholders before a code of conduct can be passed. You're going to find around the code of conduct definitions of misconduct, those that are serious and those are minor misconduct. This is to assist our management teams and school governing bodies in dealing with these misconducts, especially if children are facing expulsion or even suspension because of these unwarranted behaviour in school, which will also deal with issues of abuse of children in school and also the violence that we experience in school, including bullying. So the code of conduct will look at those things. The code of conduct will focus on the definition of corporal punishment, which has been abolished long time ago. But since the abolition of corporal punishment, there are other incidences that crop in in the disciplining of children which have emotionally other unwanted consequences, which normally will make children not to feel comfortable in schools. So you'll get a lot of definitions and examples of what the Bella Bill proposes to be excluded as form of punishment in schools. We are in a country that is full of protest, too many disruptions. And these disruptions end up in school on a regular basis. When there are differences, people begin to go to schools and lock the gates and prevent children from going to school. The bill seeks to outlaw those type of tendencies and behaviour and also requires that it becomes law that people who disrupt schooling and stop children from going to school need to face the might of the law and get imprisonment or fines because of those tendencies of disrupting schools. South Africa has some schools that are small and non-viable. The reason why we call them small and non-viable is that these are schools that have two, three teachers who are supposed to be teaching right through all grades and all subjects, which is not doable under normal circumstances. Now, in Sasa, current Sasa, in section 12, you do get that clause that says the MEC may close or merge schools. But it ends up there. It doesn't tell them how to do, to go about it. But what is happening now is that departments are closing and merging some schools without following due processes. So this bill is there to show steps that departments need to follow when they are to close or merge schools, including issues of consultation with members of the public, members of the unions and all those type of things in order to make sure that due process is followed. So you'll find that inside this bill. The bill talks a lot around financial administration in schools, which is the responsibility of SGBs. But it is saying to SGBs, as you do your budgeting, as you go to annual general meetings of parents to get approval for the budget, you need to be transparent. So the bill is giving conditions that you need to inform parents about everything that you're going to use the money for, including the payment of teachers, which we call it section 38A, where teachers are remunerated for extra work that they do. But the challenge is that SGBs are not very transparent in telling parents what is going on with those monies. We're also requesting SGBs to inform the department on a quarterly basis about financial expenditures and incomes. In the current Sasa, this is done annually at the end of the year. And they are giving six months, which means the closing date of financial statement is the 30th of June every year. But we're saying that time is too far. A lot happens on a monthly basis as schools are using funds. Then it is important that there are reports around financial utilization in schools. We're not talking audited financial statements. That happens once a year. But regular reports on a quarterly basis on how the funds are used in a school. That's what you're going to find in Sasa. Sasa, as we're trying to amend it, will also look at the request that the minister look at the pregnancy issues in a school. I've indicated it's not curriculum, so we're not teaching pregnancy, we're not teaching. But we're requesting in the Bella Bill that the minister looks at how pregnant girls are managed and treated at schools. Because no teacher has been trained to deal with girls that are pregnant. Now, the minister needs to indicate how teachers need to manage pregnant girls. Steps such as who impregnated the girl learner? Is it a parent? Is it a peer? Is it a community member? That will open up ways in which schools can report around issues of learner pregnancies, either to different authorities in order to get social support. A pregnant girl at school has a lot of demands. There are times when they will not be able to write examination. The minister needs to regulate on what happens if a child was unable to write. What happens if the child needs to go home and stay at home because the delivery period is closer? So the Bella Bill is requesting that we give the minister that opportunity to work specifically with teachers on how to manage girls that are pregnant at school. The Bella Bill wants to respond to issues of home language. It wants to respond to the issue of introduction of languages in as many schools as possible. Currently, the language police of school is the responsibility of the SGB. But it ends up there. If the SGB decides this is it, it's final, nobody can do anything about it. So this then prevents other learners of the community to do mother tongue teaching and learn in their own home languages because the SGB will have decided. So what you get in the bill is a proposal that SGBs should continue developing language policies. But if the language policies are not in line with the wishes of the community and the constitution of the country, and it becomes restrictive, then the department needs to step in. So that's what you'll find. It's also an issue around admission policies, which SGBs develop. But if SGBs develop these policies that are not in line with the constitution and are discriminatory in nature, then the department needs to step in and try and remedy the situation where possible. The Bella Bill has the longest section there that contains issues around homeschooling. The department acknowledges that there is public schooling, there is independent schooling, and there is homeschooling in the country. And when you talk about homeschooling, the department acknowledges the benefit of those homeschoolers and the desire of parents to decide that they want to go that route. The department acknowledges that parents who do homeschooling have the right to decide what they want to teach their children. And it's mostly around issues of morality, religion, and also the benefit of a child following up a curriculum that follows his own academic abilities and all that. That is acknowledged. But what the department is asking through the Bella Bill is that should parents decide to homeschool their children, they need to report to the department that they are homeschooling their children. Government needs to know the whereabouts of the children. Government acknowledges that you can do homeschooling and teach your own curriculum, but the condition is that the curriculum must be internationally recognized. It should not be a curriculum lesser than what government school is offering. And get us clear, we're not saying we want you to teach CAPS. That clause does not talk about CAPS. It says choose your curriculum, but make sure it's a recognized curriculum that you want to teach. And lastly, maybe let me stop the chairperson so that I don't take a lot of time for members to comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Seabongas. Mr. Lebe. He's a soldier, Shem. He has been with us from Limpoopo. We are soldiers too, by the way. We've carried this thing from Limpoopo till here. We are going to start now getting your views. And the manner in which we are going to do it, we are using English because we think everybody understands it. You, when you approach the mic, you've got a right to speak your language. We've got interpreters here, here, from these chairs. They interpret the vernacular, the vernacular. They will interpret it. When you approach the mic, you tell us your name. You tell us whether you support or you don't support the bill. And then you give us your reasons. At the back, there is a lady there who is having forms. Those forms are meant for people who don't like public speaking, who didn't want to come to the mic and speak, but who would still want to have their voices to be heard. So, tawkon ba, mna antandu teeta, uzavele, uktweche, intomba zanalea, ine afro mfa. Ukteli forms ku yo, and then utati form ke uifilishé, ngolo shobo. Uzautetimizuzemitatu. Only three minutes. We are cutting you if awkata ibi uteta. Koba ifasna bane ota, yoba magte tveka ngakanani na. Anisozeni kwebu teeta. This clause is, by the way, is a 56. See 56, so which means, umtunomta nga teeta kanga, okafuna yonka, zozo, ngolo agé. Sipniki three minutes because sithingba kumezuzemitatu, sabi si, si fumani sense, yoba, uya pikanikani. Eh, lelpikaala oya, oya ngakulo. I'm going to start this side. Sawkala kualakala. And I'm urging people to sit where they are sitting because we start this side and then we come this side. And then we start this side and then we come this side. So I might not note you then on this first round country. I'm going to note you on the second round. So you must pray very hard that I don't miss you twice. I'm going to note hands from this side. I'm going to note 15 people to come to the mic. You come to the mic, you tell us who you are, you support or you don't support the bill. And then you say, you say. Yes, say, you say. Teeta lendufunuitet. There is a hand, one hand at the back. Sisintaluse pambil. Your hand was up. First, yourself put, pambil. Yourself, nzeka, asinaba 3. Yourself put, 4. 5, 5. Yes, 5, 6, yes, 7. Yes, yourself, I noted you put. Go to the chair. Flares with a stripe chat. Yes. Go, yourself say, yes. And you, the child. Sisi. Tikala uzeku mic, tikaluse supagama eh. Malandelelala, oke mfa kwak. The hand that is up, can you go to the mic? Yes. Yes, yourself, ma'am. Specs like me, yes, you, yes. Then we are closing this side. Thank you. You tell us who you are. You tell us you support or you reject the bill. And then you say, you say. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Greetings to all in the hall. My name is Comrade Kotalanjinka. I'm the secretary for SATU in Lady Frey. I'm standing here to support the bill, but with certain adjustments that we need to log, to log in in this meeting. We just need the adjustment on a few. Sikale, ikakulukazi, pakuletesenge, alcohol. In no way will we be able to accept selling of alcohol in our schools. That one, we want it into kubana, see note. We will not allow it to be served in our school grounds. Number two, the second one is on homeschooling. We had said that, yes, we accept homeschooling, but we need people to be monitored strictly because anyone can do as they like in their homes, in the privacy of their homes. We need a monitoring whereby abantu simazi, qualifications zabo. Kungatatoa umtunmlambi ono grade 11. Kutwa uzautetia umdana amkale kuke grade 2, umtetia opuma na kuke grade 12. We need the department to monitor it very strictly. Sisi, anye ilandelela, yonstela kengokusu menshina, jenyes liste. We also need to note language policies. Bekuteti wenga zo apa. Remember, all languages are official, South Africa's ninti. So we should not be disadvantaging any other languages. Then when we come to corporal punishment, yes, we accept the fact that it was removed. And we say that also there needs to be adjustments in the corporal punishment. In other words, yes, we do accept the bill, but with certain amendments. Thank you.
I'm the chief whip of the official opposition there in that municipality, which is the DA. We reject the bill. I will deal with clause number one that speaks about, or let me start by clause number two. Clause number two that speak about admission policy. If we claim to say that South Africa's democracy is people-centered democracy, we cannot deprive the community. It can't be like that. So it's actually against the very same principle of people-centered democracy. So we're saying as the DA, that which is going to take the power of the SGP from deciding admission is very wrong. We also agree with the compulsory, great R, a bit compulsory. Because great R is a basic, it's a foundation. You abandon a bill.
Good morning, Chair, and good morning to everyone in this hall. My name is Dr. David Matsepe. I'm from the glorious movement called SATU. We're fully behind this bill because the bill seeks to level the ground between the black and white kids. And we also need to support the very same bill, but with a minor reservations on grade R. Since grade R was moved to Department of Education, our posture is that even the educators for that particular grade must have and enjoy the same opportunities like any other educator in South Africa. With those words, I rest my case. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Uzuromandine. I'm a peer councillor for the Democratic Alliance. I'm the chairperson of an SGB in a school here in Queenstown. Firstly, we are standing here not supporting the amendments put on the bill. Reason being, one, we cannot take away the powers from the SGB, that's one. And we cannot take away a child to learn on his or her mother tongue, as it is also set out in the Constitution of the Republic. Two, sorry. With regards to the admission policy, it is also set out in the High Court. There is a High Court ruling that a child cannot be disallowed to be admitted on the basis of documents missing. There's excessive documentation which are put up on the bill for the admissions of a child. So a child cannot be deprived of a document being missing for him being admitted in a school. Three, with regards to the sexual harassment, the bill does not address the sexual victims at schools. And with regards to that casing point with one school here in this very same town, Mada Lo, the bill does not address children which are sexually abused at schools. Four, with regards to the online learning and blended learning, the bill does not address the online and blended learning, which is the fast-growing form of learning in the Republic of South Africa. So in those few, the DA doesn't support the new amendments on the bill. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Geremakai and I am a DA councillor. Therefore, I do not support this bill. And my reason being, the first one is clause number nineteen. The one that states that the minister can determine the number of SGP's. I therefore do not believe that we should give the powers to the minister to determine the number of the SGP members that should be at the schools. I think the power should be more locally centralized to the locally areas whereby the SGP can get to decide the number of the SGP's that is suitable for the school. Secondly, is clause number twenty-one, the dissolution of SGP. I've seen the bill that states that after fourteen days, they might appeal the SGP board members. And therefore, I believe that the term, it's a bit of a short notice and it does not actually accommodate, specifically if you are going to look at the geographical landscape, for instance, the rural areas. It does not even actually accommodate us because we are far in the rural eastern parts of the Eastern Cape. And therefore, these fourteen days, sometimes it's a bit of inconvenience. And then clause number five, the one of the languages, I think this bill was approached in a helicopter view in a way to say that I don't think all of the aspect has been considered. Because I think it's very important that a child gets to be taught in his or her own mother tongue. Because actually, it's a, we have, actually, if you can look at the stats, you can see that in terms of the number of the learners, in terms of the reading and writing, the numbers decrease, dear Lord. Meaning that the children, in terms of the grammar and the handwriting spelling, it's not actually turning up. Basically, which means that we have to shift in some other way in terms of trying to look at the gaps and say, maybe it's about high time now in our schools to start accommodating these learners with their own mother tongue to see if they are going to progress in future or in terms of their numbers, the stats, in terms of their reading and their writing to see if whether the numbers, they do actually get to increase or decrease. Because another reason, another reason is that you might find that we're going to end up having like your meticulous that are going to pass with a lower rate than the previous learners that were meticulous in that previous years. And therefore, whenever a child exits your high school and goes to a tertiary level, therefore, they struggle in terms of accessing things such as like your ITs. It becomes a problem because a child is not well-equipped because at a developing foundation stage, he or she has been taught to do things in a certain language. And therefore, the understanding is not actually there. But if you can try and move away and try to make things practically to be able to meet the child's halfway, I think in terms of the numbers, we might be able to assist our children in the way forward. I thank you.
Good afternoon, esteemed members, and good afternoon, everybody in the house. I am Rula Milletwadwa. I'm an official from the Department of Education, Chrisan East District. I stand to support the Basic Education Laws Amendment Bill as presented. Just to highlight then, just two things where there is, I've gotten disagreement on. On the pregnancy of learners, the bill seems to suggest that there be pattern on teachers, that is principals and teachers regarding the pregnant girls. One is suggesting that then teachers have got a lot to do at school and therefore, dealing with the issue of pregnant girls must be the responsibility of somebody else, not the responsibility of the teachers in particular because they've got a lot to do at school in order not to even care for pregnant girls as well. They are there in the main to teach and take care of the learners as well. But this responsibility, they must be absolved in terms of dealing with the responsibility of dealing with that issue. Another area one would just have to have an input on is on fundraising in schools as suggested that it can be accepted. This fundraising about alcohol in schools is not supposed to be accepted. I don't accept it. And therefore, I propose that school should be a no-go area for alcohol in whatever means. If there's anybody who wants to fundraise, they can fundraise with other things that are generally acceptable in the society, not to bring in a drug in a school so that in the name of fundraising. So that would be my input. The bottom line is that I'm supporting the bill as with those amendments. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairperson of the proceedings, and good morning to the House at large. My name is Seabonga Jonas. I am the Chairperson of SATU, Tofimwaba branch. First and foremost, I stand to support the Basic Education Laws Amendment Bill. However, Chairperson, there are some few things that I wish to highlight though I am supporting the bill. One is the saving of alcohol in the form of fundraising at school. Wish to propose that such mustn't be allowed to come nearer to the gates of schools. As we all understand that consuming of alcohol might lead to reduction of thinking ability and might, of course, cause people concerned to behave in the manner in which is not acceptable. To Chairperson, let me highlight the issue of pregnant learners in schools. Yes, that one, of course, has to be the responsibility of those that are specializing on that field. As indeed educators are not specialists, even in thinking of what is it that they need, taking into consideration that those learners might have different behaviors which educators might not be able to understand. Lastly, Chairperson, the withdrawal of some of the functions given to the SGP. I fully support that. In terms of recruitment, the recruitment function to the SGP has to be decided by the minister because, of course, of inability, the capacity of most of SGP members. Thank you very much, Chairperson.
I am Madodandebe. I greet all present here today. I came on my own, having a great interest to improve education. I support the bill. Thank you.
Let me greet everyone, especially the Chairperson. I'm Monde Sobegate, Monde Sobegate from Tarkatu. I've come here on personal basis as someone who is much more interested in terms of education. Let me be simple. I support the bill, especially on the area of language policy. Because I know for a fact that the language is sometimes or mostly used by certain schools to discriminate other people from schools. So I wish that the minister can just reconsider the language policy. However, I also have a concern much on the issue of the pregnancy in schools. I wish we can just try by all means to make sure that teachers do not become affected by the pregnancy because they are not trained on that field. And therefore, we need not to simply put much burden on the teachers. Again, on the side of the fundraising, at least we can actually propose other forms of fundraising, except the bringing of alcohol in schools. Otherwise, basically, I support the bill, except only those two gray areas that can actually be considered. I thank you.
Chairperson of the session, I am Godfrima Lewa, an official in Chrisan West. I am here to support the bill. Fortunately, Sasa, we are using it day in, day out together with the SGP's. There are few things that are already mentioned by the people before me, that one of alcohol. Although I know that a school in its correct mind cannot sell the alcohol in school. So I don't have a problem with that. But basically, I want to emphasize that I support the bill. And as preachers of statute, because as a government, we are the preachers of statute. So we have to go and talk and train our SGP's and translate it to them. But I want to say that except few things, like the one of the pregnancy, I do have a problem with that. But in all, I support the bill. Thank you. But in all, I support the bill. Thank you.
Greetings to everyone in here, specifically to the chairpersons. I'm, the surname is Mporta. I'm not going to mention my names, I'll just give you my initials, D.I. I am the Chairperson of a Democratic Teachers Union called Sadu in the region. I'm a member of the progressive revolutionaries, the African National Congress and as well as South African Communist Party. I'm here as per a mandate that firstly, we support the bill. Therefore, it means I support the bill. Yes, there are irritations which needs to be reworked and there are those that we are vehemently opposed to and would wish that they be not considered. Let me align myself in the best interest of time because there's still the other side that's still need to come, that those that have been raised by the progressives in terms of the forces of the left, we are in support of. But the issue that has got to do with alcohol, we are having a devil in our societies, mainly the underprivileged and the poor communities which are ravaged by the use of alcohol. Therefore, if we are to promote it to be utilized under the disguise of fundraising, would be perpetuating what is obtaining in our communities. Therefore, we totally reject that. Secondly, the issue of pregnancy, how to be considered by teachers in schools? We do understand that it's a human right, the issue of reproduction and production so that at least the communities and schools can have kids. But we really want to say that needs to be reworked. Probably maybe the department will consider a manpower in terms of schooling so that there be people who would look after those children that would have followed nature in its rightful way. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Let me take this opportunity and greet everyone in the house. I am Lulek Mkhwebi. I'm the official from the Department of Education from the Buffalo City Metro Education District. We are an admission pressure district, especially with the depopulation of the rural areas, people flocking into urban areas. As a result, we find our city schools having problems, limitations with admitting learners, especially the black learners. Because they are the most learners that will find them flock in our district office with no space for admission. So really, the ministry, the issue of the admission policy should be handled by the ministry because some of the SGP's, you find them reluctant to admit learners. Especially, what could happen is that the department should be obliged to provide resources. For example, quick resources such as prefabs and also the available teachers. So that the issue of admission, it does not become a race issue whereby you find it's mostly the black learners, the ones that are struggling with admission. Also, the issue of the language policy. I think if there is a flock of black learners in the city schools, in the former Motelsi schools, I think Kosa is the home language should be there in those schools and also in the private schools because they play a big role in terms of admission. So the private schools, they should afford, they must be obliged also to offer the Kosa, the African languages as the home language. Because especially after the economic implications of the COVID-19, you find that the parents who could not pay fees in the private schools and also in the Motelsi schools, they end up coming back to the township schools and to find out they have not done the home language, which is an African language. I think I've talked about the issue of recruitment. Some of our SGP's, they don't have capacity as far as recruitment. I think the issue of recruitment should be the prerogative of the department. I thank you.
Greetings to the Chairperson of the session and all the parliamentarians that are in attendance and everyone else. My name is Chris Rundingi, a concerned citizen coming from Linge Village, just outside Queenstown. I support the bill. The reason for me to support the bill is as follows. Those who read extensively would understand that our country is ranked third in terms of alcohol consumption. And we can't then at this day and age, when we, under the pretext of raising funds, allow our schools to be made, schools to sell liquor. We talk of moral decay, we can't condone. We want our children to have a brighter future, just like anybody else. Further to that, I support the bill on the basis of homeschooling. Homeschooling has to be put in the proper context other than it being construed now by many. Homeschooling, all what we are supporting to it is it being regulated. Rational being the Chairperson of the session, we are not a banana republic. We are a country, a sovereign country with laws and regulations and no one should be above. And if we have one education system in the country, whoever then wants to be in that space must heed the call and subject him or herself to all the regulations that are in place that govern the education system of our beloved country. Thirdly, on the issue of language policy, we time again, Chairperson of the session, brace ourselves, pride ourselves as a rainbow nation, a nation that diverse as it is can live together happily so. But when it comes to language, we are taken aback as far as 1976 and we can't at this day and age allow that. When it's convenient, we are a rainbow nation. When it suits a particular fragment of the population, policy comes in place on language. To discriminate our beloved children in our forefatherland, we cannot. On the issue of grade R, let there be no discord because there's a function shift already.
Your time is up. Hello, Chair and members. My name is Jennifer Whitfield. My mom teaches my brother and I at home and we don't agree with clause thirty-seven of the Bella Bill. At home, we get to learn about things that we rarely love. It's cool because I get to decide what I want to learn about. But it seems like the people who are making the rule of, clause thirty-seven, don't think about kids like us who learn at home. Can you please talk to me to find out why I like learning at home before you make any new rules about home education? Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Pierre de Villiers and I'm representing FEDSAS, the Federation of Governing Bodies of the South African Schools. And I'm going to focus today on clauses sixteen, thirty-three, two, thirty-eight and thirty-seven. We partially support the bill. The SGP's power concerning procurement clause sixteen, this proposed amendment regarding central procurement will centralize procurement LTSM at schools is problematic for the following reasons. It seeks to enable the HOD to withdraw the functions of SGP's to purchase textbooks, teaching materials or equipment for the schools. We reject the proposed amendment. Certain schools such as Elson Schools are better informed to determine and provide the material for the specific leaders in their schools. Section twenty-one allows governing bodies to obtain allocated functions which include purchasing of textbooks, educational material or equipment for the school. Should a SGP not fulfill their mandate, the HOD can withdraw those allocations. Providing quarterly reports on all income and expenses clause thirty-three, the submission of quarterly reports apart from the annual audited financial statements that a governing body would have to submit will place a financial and administrative burden on the governing body and the school resources. Section forty-three five of the Schools Act already makes provision for an SGP to submit annual financial reports which we think is sufficient. The proposed changes that we support and will enhance education is the requirement of compulsory grade R education. The proposal to make grade R compulsory is supported. It is necessary, it's a necessary step for early childhood development to be in line with the National Integrated Childhood Development Policy. Then criminalization of the act of providing false information clause thirty-eight, this proposal will make parents aware of the importance of providing true and correct information to schools to ensure proper administration. Then we would like to see a clear definition of meetings. Extension of section nine of the Schools Act on the expulsion of learners, it must be broader elaborated on. And then the administration of finances, the minister and other HOD must determine the direction under which an SGP must establish and administer its school funds. I thank you.
Good morning, everyone. This is Nungurule Gunguse, Regional Secretary for Sadu, Northern Region. I've come here solely to say I support the Bella Bill. I fully support it, but on the basis of alcohol serving in our school, I do not support that because in our communities, it is clear that our learners are having social ills. Then if alcohol is being served on our school, what will happen to the communities that were staying in? By just looking at our communities, our learners are being confined into social ills. So we're saying, in terms of serving alcohol, whether it's for fundraising purposes or anything, we are against that. Secondly, to homeschooling, we are saying the teachers will be teaching on online or homeschooling, should be qualified teachers and the curriculum thereof should also be DBE oriented. I thank you.
Your time is up. Because, because, it's a very long, it's a very long. Translation.
The previous speaker's name is Nomsam Misso from Sakissizwe, also from Sanco, also involved with grade R. She supports the bill, but there are some things that she does not support in the bill. The first being the use of alcohol in our schools. She says that there's already a problem with drugs and weapons in schools. The teachers are already at the risk. So how much more will it be with the use of alcohol? They need to consider other ways to fundraise. The teachers' risk will be greatly increased with the use of alcohol. The second point that she raised is that teachers don't need to be midwives. They already have too much work to do. The other point that she raised is that she agrees with the grade R implementation into the school system because the grade R is the first step of the foundation phase. But the teachers don't get the same consideration. She mentioned that on the first of April 2022,
they signed an agreement which is still not being honored. And the last point that she raised is that the SGBs must not be sidelined because they're looking after the community's needs. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Side A, you've done very well with time. You've done very well. You know, I think we stopped only two people. No, we stopped only two. I'm coming this side now. I'm going to note hands this side that are going to come and raise their views. Yourself? Yes. You are number one. You must go there and stand in front of the mic. Yourself, sir? No, 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 no. Yes, you. Yes. Yourself, ma'am? Yes. Just behind her, yourself? I'm gonna come. I am going to come. Yourself, that dangapach? Yes. Yourself, yes, specs? Just in between the children, there is a guy with a red. Yourself and yourself, ma'am? Yourself, sis? Yes. Yourself, sir, with a grin? Yes, at the book? Yes, you looking at the bag? Yes, yourself, sir? Yes. Standing, yes, you? Yes. Ma'am? Yes. Yes, you. Why are you raising your hand? Are they fools? Oh, okay. We are coming back. We're gonna come back. We're gonna come back. That's a promise. We are coming back. It's a promise.
Okay. Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Monde Desha. I am coming from Imobaya Temba Municipality, where I am a councillor there. The caucus leader of the official opposition, which is the Democratic Alliance. I'm also the whip of the Democratic Alliance at the Chrisani District Council. I am standing here to reject the bill from clause number one to clause number fifty-six. Speaking on clause number two, which is making the grade R compulsory, I do not believe that the government has enough resources to implement this. And also the government will need to make huge investments in building classrooms and to train well specialized grade R teachers. And this is simply not possible with the current economic difficulties we are facing as a country. And also, Chairperson, the government should stop wasting money, wasting money in holding public hearings instead of taking the very same money to address real issues that we have and we're facing in the schools. For example, one, the eradication of the pits toilet, mad schools, and also to address the number of high dropouts on these schools. Lastly, Chairperson, South Africa is being rated as the third country worldwide in consuming alcohol. And yet, this uncaring government is introducing a bill that we must sell alcohol in the schools premises. Thus, I reject this bill from clause number one to clause fifty-six. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Dumisani Mapunu from Masikanya, Elinge. Now, I stand up here this morning or this afternoon to support, fully support the bill. Actually, ndiambanabantu baby city by support IP siteta indwaye. Let us do away with alcohol with colozet because it's a good start. U grade R, I fully support yonge indo eketwa ngayo. But we need to modify glamtimbi we're pregnant. If ohulumenda gasnetis, spend health educators at our schools. Na glamtimbi we're admission. Glamtimbi we're admissions, tanga ba sineshaleish. Class theater umdanapaya engenas documents is supportayo. Then challenge yetu balapa ekbenba na ohulumende angabaniki abandwa na imali eskolweni. Kakumtimbi kakulu nutrition. Homeschooling, I fully support. Diabulela kakulu. Diambana labata inle innyaga nyagia obtosho ngabeza ngoz.
I am Dumisani Mapunu. Good afternoon. I am also from Masikanya, Elinge. I support the bill as others have also supported it. The grade R issue, I also support, but we need to modify this. And the admissions that are being done should also be considered. All documents that are provided, I also support that and I support the government initiations. I thank you.
That's fine. Thank you so much. Good morning, Chair and the Committee. My name is Machtabuerta. I am from Walters Susulu Municipality, the caucus leader for the Democratic Alliance. And I'm standing here to speak against this bill, to reject this bill. We do not believe that this bill addresses the critical issues that is experienced by the Department of Education. And we do not believe that it is in the best interest of the parents to have their constitutional rights undermined. I will speak to clause four, which is the admission policy, and clause thirty-seven on homeschooling. On clause four, we as the DA reject this clause. We do not believe that SGBs should lose their power to determine their admissions policies. And we do not believe unless there's discrimination, we do not believe that H O D should be allowed to interfere in the admissions policies of schools. And we believe that in the instances where there is discrimination, then the DA believes that an appeals mechanism must be put in place. It would be a legal requirement for schools to register and to send their admission policies to the Department of Education thirty days after this bill has been signed into law. The department would have to approve these policies within sixty days of receiving them. We do not believe that the department is capable of doing this process. The DA also does not believe that an intergovernmental committee should be established to deal with learners' documentation. It would be a waste of resources. There are also concerns whether this intergovernmental committee would not transgress the regulations of the Protection of the Personal Information Act. A number of organizations have also objected to this clause with the definition required documents that's mentioned in clause one. It might disadvantage undocumented learners. They are also worried about the numbers of documents needed for registration, which would make it more difficult for parents to register their students. On homeschooling, this clause would force parents that choose to homeschool their children to register them with the H O D and to allow the H O D access to the homes to inspect. The DA believes that the department must create ways to ensure that homeschool learners receive a quality education. But we believe that they must consult more with homeschooling sector before they can decide on the assessment procedures. It's not enough research or consultation that has taken place with regards to homeschooling. I thank you.
Can we just allow the speakers to speak without really making noise? Next.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Greetings to the members of the committee and the House at large. Chairperson, what we have noted is that law tends to be dominated by a dominant class in the society that we live in. That has, of course, been playing out from the recent speakers that have been speaking here. What we want to affirm, Chairperson, is the fact that as the committee and as parliament, you guys should continue holding hearings because the luxury of opposition politics is making preposterous recommendations knowing that you would not stomach them. My name is Lukumo Nomnabo. I stand to support the bill. The issue that I have with the bill, Chairperson, is on the clause that deals with alcohol. It would be a total contrivance of that section that deals with the use of illegal drugs at school. Because as it stands, Chairperson, schools do not have internal mechanisms, proper internal mechanisms that they can use to monitor the use of these drugs. And a further point that I want to make is on homeschooling. That penalty that is imposed on independent schools that establish them and fail to register them should not only end there. It should also extend to people that establish homeschooling and fail to follow the prescriptions of the law by registering them. Thank you very much.
Very good afternoon. I am Bishop Mandila, representing the District Education Forum Chrisani Eastern Moral Regeneration Movement. We support as DF the bill. However, there are a few things that we want to highlight, which would love the department and the government to take note of. Some have been mentioned already. We are trying to fight these social ills at schools. If we can just open up a smaller piece of an opening of liquor at schools, it will be a futile exercise for us. We also want to say this. The minister has got all they say and he has employed the people in relevant structures. So we support. Because if there are no structures placed or the people are placed in structures, what will be their function? But we want them to go and just uproot these few things for us from the bill that liquor must be abolished. And also the language policy must be left to the school governing bodies to determine. And also the one that has not been touched, the religious part, which is emerging, to become a war, especially in this our province, Eastern Cape, must also be addressed by the school governing board and the management as well to agree as to which and what religion must be taking place as per their agreement. Thank you. Eh, manbulele slalo. Disauteto luimlesinto. Kuba ngogo mkako. Olushumelanye. Lamaluimi ayalinga. Ndiviela nalendu bandine tolik. Ndikokele iskollo se foka school. Se sokala be Eastern Cape esimnyama. So le bill iteta ngagasana nam yolondo izoy kasa. Maningapaulo sokupauliwe in case ku pelinlebe. Man diyanje kulendo timchambi nina walunga begelio nilapa etafli. Ni zo mamela tina. Okanyesale nini position on this part. Ndireza le concern because there is a circulating S M media WhatsApp here. And le ndi isetulaitayo isuka komneywe no petafli. Ni nyuluka nganani. Ukusa naleme ko kuti. Kaka anye abanyebenuapa. Kuma nyeba onyabelewa na social media. They are totally opposed to this bill from clause one to clause fifty-six. I need to be clarified. There is a bit of contradiction insofar as I understand. Ndifunutacha kulendo. Okoba, I would rather suggest that the status quo insofar as recruitment should remain. Because I go teta slungu ku eskolweni no ba enlightened. Abadata ba semakaya. Bakubegile eskoliswe ngabo. Le process yoku recruiter i principal on its own is overwhelmed with interest. Therefore, I would rather appreciate where we insert a clause that says song ekusosayet. Masibe notando valoku recruiter relevant lipa emakai. And don't begin to marginalize other people because they have not gone to school or they did not have that privilege of going to school. And hence I'm advocating that we must.
A question, Pelile, Pelile question. Because translation?
The previous speaker's name? No, he didn't give his name. He said that all eleven languages are equal. Hence, he would expect him express himself in vernacular. Okay, the first thing? Oh, the other thing that he mentioned that he is leading the first foka school in the Eastern Cape. So therefore, the bill affects him directly and therefore he supports the bill. And then he also mentioned that maybe the honourable members sitting at that table have already adopted a position with regard to this bill because there's a WhatsApp message that's being setulated that is coming from one of the members on the table. And that is opposing everything from clause one right up to clause fifty-six. He also mentioned that the recruitment status quo at the schools should remain unchanged. And he said that speaking English should not be a criteria for people to be on the SGB because some members of the community do have the wisdom and the whole society should be responsible for the recruitment process. People should not be marginalized because they are not educated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi there. Good morning. Igamalam nosala. I just want to say I reject the ball. I am standing for the homeschooling community. And I would just like to begin my three minutes with a statement from Oliver Tombo. The fight for freedom must go on until it is won. Until this country is free and happy and peaceful as part of the community of man, we cannot rest. This bill is against the structure of the family. It's against the freedom that our freedom fighters fought for. Nelson Mandela once said, never, never and never again shall it be that this beautiful land will be again experience the oppression of one. land will be again experience the oppression of one by another. You want to oppress us as a homeschooling community and it is just not right. The freedom in South Africa that was once enjoyed for a couple of years was hard fought for, men lost their lives, families were shattered. You want to repeat that process, but not by establishing freedom but by taking it away from us, the people. The first freedom fighters fought and planted seeds of hope for all of us. And in time, beautiful trees of freedom sprung. And as time passed, government came and it cut down a beautiful forest that the world marveled upon. Over the past years, you have come with lies and deceit and no hope, making South Africa a barren wasteland. We cannot, we can all sometimes lose our way, but I urge you please, don't do this anymore. Come back to your original purpose. God created us with a free will. Use yours to make South Africa great again. Oliver Tombo said, I would not hesitate to vote for a white person as president if I thought he was the best person for the job. Now personally, as I stand before you, in every single election, I have voted for a black man because I believed he was the best person for the job. And I think every single person sitting here is sitting here today for the children of this country. So let us focus on the children and do what is best for them. If I may end off with this one last phrase from Oliver Tombo, we all belong to South Africa and South Africa belongs to us. I stand here before you as a person that believes in what the Bible teaches me, not as a white, not as a Boer, not as an Afrikaner, but as a child of the Most High God, created of, the Creator of heaven and earth, by the grace of God.
Your time is up, but next.
Ngosi parlamente, dis bulsela kumti uonge okoyo apenlini namchane, tingu mama uzine chununga mayi, anaptosa member. Ndizea apa ndzo kasa here to support the bill, more especially u clause number three, who entails the monitoring of school attendance by educators, principals and the school governing body. Ndizoktela, boku thoba ukulu, kukrai kiswe home languages. Ingakumbi isitosa apa e Inok Mgiijima. Ta kusenzwa, the making of the laws, kukunse kweba, abandwana, ukuse bakwazu, kukomprehenda, ba kabi se uluimi luabo, luenkobe, ngosi.
Translation?
I thank you, I'm an aptosa member, I support the bill and on clause three, I do educators functions, I'm also an SGB member and I consider it of importance, the use of the home language isitosa and I am a representative here in the Inok Mgiijima region. I thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Kayla Titus and I'm from Tarkastad. I do not support the bill. I believe SGB powers should not be taken away from them. These people are people in the community as well as people that have kids in that school and I think they are the people who should be making decisions in that school. And that's why I do not support this bill and will not support anything other than this. Thank you.
And the members of parliament, I am Nkosnatin Gesi, the principal of Kute Gwalapa Full Service School at Inuba Etembu. I'm also the chaperson of Satu at Kredok Hofmeier Brachi. I'm here to support the bill, whereas I have some reservations that needs to be considered. But I'm very concerned about one thing. As also one of the members alluded to a question of having a player in the referee at the very same time. Then you begin to ask how credible it is, will the outcomes of this consultation be credible when you have people who already have adjudicated on the matter whereas it was, it was not yet finished in regards to dealing with the matter? That brings, to me, that raises a concern to me as a citizen of this country. But I want to raise two things that have been expressed on the bill. One of them is that of the pregnancy issue at school. I'm coming from an old school where I studied teaching, for teaching at colleges. In my study, I was never trained to deal with pregnant people. Therefore, I want to understand as to, I want to be appraised as to how the department will begin to adjudicate and try to come with solutions with regards to that. That's one of my main concerns. And number two, the question of language policy. With language currently, language is used for discrimination. And it discriminates the marginalized and the poor people on admission of former model C schools. I saw which those powers also can be, can rest, the policy should rest with also the embassy as the suggested bill dictates. Last but not least, I want to appreciate that also the bill covers the question of grade R. In our system, we are having problems of people being qualified, but they get a stipend and this stipend does not meet the needs of them and although their qualifications as well are underutilized because of the fact that these people are just categorized as practitioners. I saw wish that with these considerations that also other comrades that came forward have alluded to can be considered and then I fully support the bill. I thank you.
Eh, moluini kama Msuki Sinfah ni kukemka. Eh, ani zubamte, akanga nprepare speech, yabo. So overall, ani ani amisela nalepili, kwa indeti beneno ukulume ndani amisela na ayi. Eh, njevansi cho like, it's no secret, but the current like, the current governing administration is corrupt, like the education system is failing, it has been failing for years, it's failing like whatina, but we're realizing that now, yabo. So, in dona nyebensari, I had a lot to say, man, yabo, kanti libel. I had a lot, because this nigga three minutes, kha, yabo. Koto agi, and the reason why I'm not, another reason, dinga i, mi amisela nepili, ileyi utwala, ba utwala bufuna ndu, like, kubaloze nalonto nalopi, wai bo, no ba, ira, suba maibepa. Like, I have a lot, man, questions and, you know, koto kango ukunza, wendi bamba, she apa. Down call. Forward, forward.
The previous speaker's name is Msuki Sinkanka. The previous speaker's name is Msuki Sinkanka, he doesn't support the bill, in fact, he doesn't support anything to do with the current government. He says that it is no secret that the government is corrupt and he also mentioned that the education system is, has been failing for years, it failed him. He has a lot to say, but he forgot most of his points because of the three minute limit. And the other thing he doesn't support is the use of alcohol in schools. Thank you.
Honourable Chair and Members of the Portfolio Committee, I am Christopher Mueller from King Williamstown, East London, Bisho area. I reject the Basic Education Law Amendment Bill. I reject clause eight allowing the sale of alcohol on school premises could lead to the major social problems of alcohol addiction and an increase in theft, muggings for money and in some places the age limit of twenty-one of ages for the consumption of alcohol. I reject clause forty-one, this can result in schools keeping certain critical information about children from parents. I'm against abortion can lead to depression, suicide, children are not to let strangers touch down there as some children are forced to have kids to get the grant benefits. I reject clause twenty-seven, if the closure of certain schools are allowed, this will result in just over one thousand six hundred schools to be closed in the Eastern Cape alone. This will result in communities not having schools, job losses and most probably more children on the streets without an education. Due to the population explosion, there aren't enough schools to support the population, homeschools for the gap. I reject clause thirty-seven, this clause is not based on research. The Department of Basic Education, own consultant, Dr. Trevor Kumber, in a draft document, two thousand and fifteen, about home educators advised that the DBE to consult with all parties involved and an independent research study should be done. This has never been done by the DBE. The DBE has also until this day not taken the research that was done by the Peteslosi Trust into account. The committee here today is being asked to do exactly what the DBE own consultant advised against, to change the law without thorough research. Bullying in schools is a major issue. Our child, Masan, is on autism spectrum. He was verbally abused by an educator and misunderstood by the other kids in grade R and grade about that. The home educators that we have been a part of really show to be an inclusive to all people from many different backgrounds, religion, ethnicity, financial status. I thank you today for hearing me.
Eh, ngosi che, nditela ndi vumeleni nditi inanga nense basa. Okwa mje che sebe teti labimiba si Inok Mgiijima, kukweleka, ndunguzweli, nduwagwatualo. The stakeholder, Inok Mgiijima and also Chaperson, where SGB, kweyese nyesa skolosikwi Weklisi area. And kumela njekapa namchane kukuti ndizo ikasa from clause one to clause fifty-six yonale pela bill. Unale clause ndi bonba ibangele abantu bangamika akshoka anye bangazi nzi. I think kanti cho ngakakshle bilem clause eight, lo nalendu ba utwala eskolweni. Ndia khalala kukuti la clause lena kukona apu mchane bingakakuswa ngakaksha kozin kena ifumana lomkulu ndaufula ndelelele. Diahalela kukuti iti la clause lena, a iti makuvulu ishipini eskolweni. Iti mchane mkaosijongisisa iti, tagnalo activity, o elsisikolo sineholo. Ndifige ndungxali nditi, ndia chatoka anye ndenzalose romioni, nditela ukurenda ela holo kisikolo, glendo reza ifanso fowikskolositu. No kogwimeko izinjeana, singake siwese la clause iti lena, ta umdi esia, esisiku, eyo hayare shoka anye, eyo renda holo holo. Ezo patala, imalele ezo isa eskolweni fowutini, ukureza ifanso saskola, I think lapiliana, singake nayo siwese. Unalen da ba i homeschooling, indenza yonan webu ngamika akshle, glendo ba ya chinja mchane mikarichula muka nisila pas. Kulilishoka anye kulitha mchane nganxala, kuinda webu zifa mapi Inok Mgiijima, apu fumasu ba, kunaba, kunabanda ba tila ba neskolos, abeba zenza ra kifamasabu. Diani beno lo ikolala ba nduana, bayane ba silele, klasibasa kowe skolos, lapa round townisa, lapi komanu, ba bayane ba sheke glendo, yokulande lelela, yesfundo zabo, ilenda ba i homeschooling, yonayotwa, diahalela, ikaikala selu ngelinya ime, ngosi.
I tend to chair and all the other dignitaries, I am here from Inok Mgiijima. Nevertheless, I support this bill and the child at school should also be considered. And at schools, I am against the fact that schools be used as shipins. Nevertheless, we must also consider that there are halls at school and these buildings, the halls are used for occasions such as Mari Gis and there are these funds that for those occasions they must pay to the school. Nevertheless, this being the case, I support the bill.
Thank you, Honourable Chairperson. Honourable Chairperson, my name is Yusuf Kassim. I am the provincial chairperson of the Democratic Alliance in the Eastern Cape and I'm a member of the provincial legislature serving in the Eastern Cape Education Portfolio Committee in this province. Chair, let me state that we cannot support this bill in good conscience. I'm a parent of four and I commiserate with every single parent that wants their child to have the best quality education. But this bill is not going to level the playing fields. Let me use a local example because I've visited schools in this district on a number of occasions. Down the road in Victoria Park, there's a school called Maria Low. Now, if I'm a parent in Imlungisi, I would want to send my child to Maria Low because there are better facilities at that school as compared to a school like in Kuwanta Public High School. The failure of this government to provide the same quality facilities and education in townships, in rural areas, in all of our communities, has meant that we have the most unequal education system in the world. Now, what's happening at Maria Low is actually a crime against our children. Isikosa home language, mother tongue children and Africans, mother tongue children are forced to learn accounting in English and they are both failing because they are not learning in their mother tongue. Instead of ensuring that we have the best facilities at all of our schools, we want to force children to learn in English instead of their mother tongue and they are failing. Now, if we had to say that we really care about redress, what we would do is ensure that we promote mother tongue education and we hold this government accountable to have the right facilities in all of our schools and this bill is not going to do it. Let's look at section sixteen. There is no way, I know that Satu members have been told they must come here and rubber stamp and support this bill for the ANC, I know that. But how can Satu members in good conscience say that the district, sorry, the province must procure all the LTSM instead of the schools? You are giving away your power to the province and you know as well as I do that they are corrupt. That's why they suspended the former SG, Dr. Naledi Imbude, just before they concluded the LTSM contracts and the stationary and textbook contracts because they are corrupt. We must ensure that we keep the power with our SGBs and our schools because they are at least accountable or more accountable to our communities. Who is holding the HOD accountable? There's nobody holding the HOD accountable. The HOD is given marching orders from the ANC party bosses and whoever they are connected to, whoever they say must get employed, whoever they say must get appointed, whoever's connected to them, whoever will sleep with them, they are the ones... to them, whoever will sleep with them, they are the ones that get appointed. We are not going to be complicit in this historical injustice to our children. We must reject this bill, we must keep the power with our schools and we must hold this government accountable for their failures because those that have failed the black child in-
Your time is up, your time is up. Your time is up.
Good afternoon, Chairperson and the MP members. I'm Mr. Apah and I'm standing here representing Kosa SGB. Kosa SGB is the Association of the School Governing Bodies representing parents and the schools and the public school. Chairperson, allow me to indicate something here. When we look at you at that table, we look at you as our leaders and we look at you as a government. But now, I have a video here and I want to, 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 to. If I, 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 I know your numbers, I will forward this video to you. This video must be used as an evidence that you are, you are not honest here. In fact, what you are doing, you came here to divide us. You must come here to unite us. I want to applaud FATSAS for partially supporting the bill. And let me say, as Kosa SGB, we support the bill hundred percent. What I want to indicate here, we as, as the associations of the school governing bodies, we work with this bill or SASSA every day. And then I believe that the importance of gathering these people here is for them to assist us. But now, when we, we see the, 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 the video circulating telling people not to support the bill, meaning that you have your own agenda. And when I'm sitting here, I'm listening, people, they are not playing a ball. They are playing individually. Don't come to us with politics. Education is not a politic, a politic matter. Please unite us. We want to build the education, we, we, we assist us to get rid, rid out of boundary education in totality. Because boundary education, it is still existing. But now, this, this amendment is coming to address. We are not here to listen to-
Your time is up.
Thank you. I think so. Okay. Hi, afternoon, honorable members. My name is Carmen Benito-
Can we order? Can we listen, please?
My name is Carmen Benito and I reject the bill in its entirety, specifically clause thirty-seven, which deals with homeschooling, forty-one with learner pregnancies, thirty-three for the closure of microschools and number eight, as so many people have mentioned, alcohol sales at schools. Rape, murder, abuse, violent crimes, alcohol is almost always a part of these. Why on earth are we wanting to have alcohol sold at schools? It doesn't make any sense. I don't understand why it's in the bill or how it benefits the children's education at all. I'm unsure of the intentions of this bill because a lot of it is very, very vague and it's, it's not clear. It's left open to interpretation and that, that can lead to danger, that can lead to endangering the children. Article twenty-six, section three of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights states, "Parents have prior right to choose the kind of education that shall be given to their children." This bill not only takes that right away, but infringes on privacy rights and discriminates against those who are not rich by making home education only accessible to those with money. Sorry. This bill violates chapter two, sections twenty-eight point two of our constitution, which clearly states that the child's best interests are of the utmost importance in every matter concerning the child. No two children are the same. They don't learn the same, they don't fit in the same box. So forcing them all to learn the same way doesn't help anybody. And by forcing them to learn the same way and then assessing them according to that is, is basically like judging a fish on how it can climb a tree. The state is not our parents, the state does not own us, the state does not own our children and they have no right to dictate how we choose to educate our children. That's all.
Thank you. I'm coming this side again. I'm noting hands from this side. Titalu sadat. There is a child with a uniform, it's about two of you. Black top, sisi. We namshagas, red jacket. Yes, sir. Yes. Yourself, ma'am? Yes. I'm rounding up, I'm rounding up, I'm rounding up. Utetengoku or leha because. Eh, we salasis, sala ma'am, sala but, sala. You can't talk twice but. Kaloko, we talk, we speak only once. Ah, ah, not gabini, no. Once? You can't have many views, eh? Three minutes, person. Eh, we sala namshagas, sala sadat. No other hand here? Okay. Seivala landu, seival, seivala lesos. One more, must be close, close. One more, close. Thank you. It's closed, this side. Ah, late, late, late. I called so many times. You are late. Thank you. Asieba.
Thank you, Chair and Portfolio Committee. Chair, let me start by saying I stand here to fully support the bill. Chair, what we find when we go to our schools is that there is perpetuation of apartheid in our schools. Some people have had a privilege of using the resources of this country from nineteen sixty-five-two up to today to enrich themselves and still, and still make African people to suffer and they want us to continue that kind of trend. We are saying as parents that it must come to an end. This bill seeks to give the minister powers to change the education landscape of our country to ensure that our children can, all of them, have equal opportunities even in the schools that others have been building at the sweat of their own parents since nineteen sixty-five-two. So we are saying with this bill that the minister, the HOD, the MEC must have powers to transform our society through education in a manner that can make our people understand that we mean business of trying to build a better South Africa for all. That's a problem that others don't want. They want this better South Africa for themselves that they've been keeping for so many years that Africans have been denied to even have access to. We are saying that the bill must pass in parliament and we fully support the bill to stand in parliament as new law that will govern our education system. Thank you, Chair.
Manatatal tuba ndebulisa kweyislalu, nekazalakolonge. Ikamalam ndingulisa Khanya Putu. I'm here to support the bill. But ninety-nine, ninety percent of the previous speakers, they oppre, they oppose the clause that want to bring alcohol in schools. I personally disagree. I personally don't agree with alcohol that must be brought in schools because when teachers are under influence of alcohol, they will start doing funny things, beat learners and they will suddenly blackout during the lessons. Eh, siklakane nesyo bi si eskolwin. So asino vumela kuba go edwe izinodo kuba kuvinyelu kwaala. And uba ukulmenewe tuya vumela uzi sogokwala eskolwin, which means we libele purpose of education. Uba asie eskolwin isiele wio funda singa ba fund. Now, ukuzaku lenwe iti otishala kazi, fneka ba no tishala mabauzali eskolwin. Abelibele ukuzali sa kubiskolesbe ni maternity ward, siza funda ni nitina. Kuba eskolwin isiele wio funda. Akuzatuwa kenngoku, ma kubeku alcohol must be sold in school in order to fundraise. There are many ways to fundraise in school. Uhostu kala tina, uwe sport tournament, uwe concert to raise the funds for eskololo. Uba akuztiwa ngoku eskolwin ukuzau zipa, which means ukuzatuwa ngeni minima kubeku nechisanyama kualapew eskolwin ne PNP. Thank you.
The previous speaker, Lisakanya Putu, did mix a lot, so I will just interpret the parts that were purely in Kosa. He did say that they do, he supports the bill, but he will not, they will not allow the use of alcohol in schools. And if the government is prepared to allow the use of alcohol, that means that the government has forgotten the purpose of the schools, which is education. He also touched on schools having maternity wards and he was also against that. And he also said that there are many other ways in which schools can raise their funds except having bars because if, if they start with bars, then they will eventually have chisanyama as well in the schools. Thank you.
My name is Chona Konge and I, and I support the bill, especially on the party of the language, eh, policy. In our, what do I mean? I come from a black, a community that has black schools, that have the majority of black students. So how can we learn as black students if you teach us using foreign languages? What do I mean? On my, on my-
Calm down. Take a deep breath. Talk.
On my subjects. Ematlasin amanins, what do I mean? Egutansi, eto what do I mean? Africans, of each mna, of each mna, what do I mean? As, as what do I mean? Umdana, umnyama, what do I mean? Ofundiswe, isitosa, what do I mean? Isitosa. I can't read the instructions that are written, human, that are wrote in Africans. So how can I answer the questions that I expected to answer on my exam? And on the part-
Kosa but, setis kosa. Setis kosa.
What do I mean? Eklenza u, e kuba what do I mean? Uchoala, what do I mean? Ebutenge, swee eskolwin ani kasi tu. Eh, because kuba what do I mean? How can we learn if we have drunk eh, go. Sizogunajaa, if what do I mean? Go, if what do I mean? Esino, tishala, abagnulileyo ekualapakuti eskolwin. How can we raise funds using alcohol? That on my, go, in my, go, I, thank you.
Sevala but. Translation?
I support the bill. I am against the fact that at most times Africans is being used and the black child needs isitosa. We cannot read in Africans, liquor sold at schools. I'm against this. And at times you find that even the educators or teachers are drunk at school and that can never be praised, I think.
You missed the yon. Ya.
It's fine now, okay. Good afternoon, Chair and the committee and the House at large. I am Tando Ganda from a small village town called Alice in the Eastern Cape. I work for the Department of Education, Eastern Cape, and I am coordinating learner admissions in the province. Also, I deal with school governing bodies, capacitating them, establishing them. Furthermore, one of my functions is to deal with disputes and fights within the schools of the province on a daily basis. So what the bill seeks to resolve, it is assisting my functions. So I fully support the bill because it is a necessity. If you don't attach emotions, you don't attach influences, you sit down and analyze what is happening in the schools, all the schools of this country, then you will see that this bill is really a necessity. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairperson of the session. I am Wusumzi Fatuse, coming from Tata Du CMC. I'm the principal of a school. I stand here with a clear and good conscience and I support the bill. Je, kulamte mbwe, elishaidu development. Eh, kuku, kukutinge kuhulmena anganga speedapa e provision of a great, a compliant classroom kune, ne facilities. Also, omyamte mbwe paya otishara, oesa practitioners, that uh, kuhulmena seseza practitioners are as a pointer as educators. So that the maybe shirbegesachoi is, 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 is,
He supports the government initiative on the ECD, especially to speed up compliant classrooms and to appoint the practitioners as educators, so that they can get similar benefits to the rest of the educators. He also expressed his gratitude for parliament coming to the people, saying that it is not a waste of time or resources. Thank you.
I'm a... 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 These communities get easy, no conscience, no... And I'm a... 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 I'm a...
I am Zwongile Hosa Animal Tubela. Allow me to greet everybody present here. I was born and grew up here. I'm a business operator. I support the bill and the homeschooling. And the fact of schools being used for religion, this spoiled the schools, and there must be no liquor being dealt with at schools. All schools could be used where they are used for the good intention, like Great R could be also implemented, and admission policies be had. I support the HOD's visions. I therefore support the bill in all.
Thank you very much. I am Tumeka Bono, the principal of Nonesi Senior Primary School, and a member of Sato in good standing. Firstly, I want to highlight something. When you want to quote our fallen heroes, don't be selective. It's disgusting for someone to stand here and tell us that we've been poisoned, as if we are non-thinkers. One thing that OR has taught us is the freedom of the mind. We are free to think. Secondly, for someone to sit there innocently, knowing that he has done something disgusting like that video. When my wife came in here, she was approached by an old man outside this building, telling her not to accept the bill. Those things are nasty. I'm standing here to fully support this bill. Again, I want to emphasize on the part of liquor. You know what is happening? Someone stood here and talked about the resources. What I can see from those schools which are owned or attempt as model schools, ninety-five percent of learners, they are our kids. And when we are there, there are bazaars and the resources that are made for liquor. We cannot accept that. We cannot accept that to use liquor during school activities. Our kids are there, they are using drugs now, they are drinking alcohol, learning that from their leaders at school. I fully support again the HOD part on terms of employment. Because what is happening in our country, as one of us has alluded here, that there's much interest in this point. In those schools, when they don't want to appoint black people, I want to say that. They don't want to appoint black people. Their SGP's are still white dominant, whilst most parents are paying fees in those schools. And when they want to exclude us, they set panels with all white people. I've been there, I can attest to that. So, if HOD has been given powers, when something went wrong, to intervene, I fully support that. In terms of pregnancy, our schools, black schools, we don't have resources. That needs to be taken care of. A clause needs to be amended for all schools, because we cannot chase those kids away from school. I, hundred percent, if you can stand here and say, "I reject from 1 to 56, we are crippling our country." How can you stand here and say, "I reject the whole thing"? It means you haven't read a single thing here. You just have been told to come here and say, "No, no, no." You are no fools. Thank you.
I'm a... I'm a... I'm a... I'm a... A teacher, I'm a local student, a Sato member. I'm a supporter of Bela. I'm a supporter of Bela, I'm a supporter of Bela. I'm a supporter of Bela, I'm a supporter of Bela. I'm a supporter of Bela, I'm a supporter of Bela. I'm a supporter of Bela. I'm a supporter of Bela. Also, I'm a supporter of Tosa. 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 I'm a supporter of Bela. I'm a supporter of Bela. I'm a supporter of Bela. I'm a supporter of full-service schools, but I'm a supporter of full-service school. I'm a supporter of great art, I'm a supporter of great seven. Then, when I'm a supporter of high school, I'm a supporter of full-service. Because, I'm a supporter of high school. I'm a supporter of high school. I'm a supporter of high school. Because, I'm a supporter of high school. 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 Then, those teachers, I'm a supporter of trained, I'm a supporter of trained. I'm a supporter of trained. I'm a supporter of appointment of principals and educators. I'm a supporter of appointment. As dispute, I'm a supporter of schools. 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 But, I'm a supporter of schools. I'm a supporter of schools. I'm a supporter of schools. I'm a supporter of schools.
Translation. Okay, the previous speaker's name is Zotu Ratsibe. She's a teacher in the location, and she's also a Sato member. She supports the Bella bill. She's grateful for the government for acknowledging great art teachers. And she also supports that Tosa language be emphasized, as it makes it easier for children to learn in Tosa first. She also touched on the full-service schools that run from grade R to grade seven, and expressed the wish that we should have full-service high schools as well, and teachers trained accordingly. And the last point she made is that the SGP's are being undermined, whereas they are given powers by the government to appoint teachers, but at the same time, their decisions get undermined. Thank you. You are on 4:08. You must ask people at home to watch you. I'm just sharing. You are on TV.
I'm Lishle Bonke, Swellankomo, an office-based educator. Am I audible? Hello? Okay. As I said initially, I'm Lishle Bonke, Swellankomo, an office-based educator. I fully support Bella bill. With some points that ought to be considered for review. One of them is this issue of the language policy. I personally believe that language policy should also be influenced by the demographics of the school. You cannot have a school that is hundred percent Chinese, but Chinese is not a fact. If Chinese is offered, Chinese is offered as a first edital language. By virtue of that school, you know, being predominantly Chinese, it says Chinese should take a certain stage in that school. Secondly, if you check on Sasa, there's a section there that talks about the expulsion, that is a prerogative of the head of department to expel. And in an event that expulsion is approved, a parent is therefore given an opportunity to appeal through the member of the executive council. I want, there must be an insertion somewhere that says, appeals should not only be limited to expulsion. Appeals should be appeals across, maybe based on the gravity of the case, appeals can be made at the office of the district director, at the office of the chief director, etc. But as of now, it's very limiting. We've got instances where a learner gets a suspended expulsion from a school, but there's just nowhere where a parent, if he's not happy about that, can appeal. So, I would definitely be happy if there's an insertion to say, whoever is aggrieved on a verdict, this is the line of march in terms of making an appeal. Also, there's something on the misconduct, where in terms of the Bella bill, we're saying we must list the offenses, but it's very silent, if not nonexistent, something that talks about possible sanctions. I'll be clear to that possible sanctions also are listed. Then, there's something here that talks about corporal punishment. We all know here that corporal punishment is outlawed, you know? No one is expected to inflict pain to anyone. But one thing that we need to also consider...
Your time is up, speakers. Thank you.
Oh, greetings to the chairperson of the session and the parliamentaryians. I'm a supporter of schools. I'm a supporter of schools. I'm a supporter of TSE Pang. I'm a good luck, I'm a good sonny, I'm a funny. I'm a supporter of schools. I'm a supporter of schools. I also support the bills, but not in totality. I can say I adopt or support the bill only fifty-one years ago, as far, and I have a problem with five of them. Yes, yes, if I... I'm a supporter of section A, Act 84 of 1996. I'm a supporter of Act 84 of 1996. I'm a supporter of Act 84 of 1996. I'm a supporter of Act 84 of 1996. For that matter, I am not against to liquor only, but any stupidifying substance. I'm a supporter of schools. I'm a supporter of pregnancy. I'm a supporter of pregnancy. I'm a supporter of schools. 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 Most years, I'm a supporter of schools. 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 I'm a supporter of section number five. I'm a supporter of schools. 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 I'm a supporter of schools.
I shall pay later. Go.
I greet everybody in the House at large. I will follow like others. I support the bill. Although there are certain sections that I think, as members will go back, they will have to re-look at these sections. And there are the issues like the ceilings that occur at schools. I am against the ceilings of this substance abuse at school. And we should also look and consider the occurrences of pregnancies at school. Also, pay attention on the fact of the video that had been rotating here. We accept many things as they are decisions made or taken by the government. And there are those that we kick out, that we do not accept, as we will not benefit from them. In other means, we will support all those issues coming from the government. In other means, we will support all those issues coming from the government, issues that are beneficial to all of us. That is all, I think.
Eh, good afternoon. My name is Nolita Zokwana. I'm from Mbasha municipality, Edudwa. I am ANC member in good standing. I am here to support the Bella Bill. Thank you.
Eh, good afternoon. I'm Nokolo Mahu Zindlasi, the education convener, Sato. Eh, I do appreciate what you did for coming to us as a public. This proves that this government is of the people for the people. Eh, I do support eh, this bill. Eh, I just want to highlight two things that other people already highlighted. The question of Ugrade R. Eh, I think this will improve eh, our education, especially of eh, from the black, eh, poor communities. I just want to say to the department really, eh, you should assist our schools with more resources that will promote the independence of the child as the child proceed to other grades. Eh, secondly, the question of eh, liquor. Liquor must be far from schools because already we are fighting eh, against substance abuse and the liquor therefore will be a very serious problem, especially to the educators. And this will compromise eh, education and learning in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thanks Chair and the House at large. I am Bongani Sili from Amashati municipality. Eh, Chair, I am here to support the bill. However, there are three areas that need to be refined, like my colleagues have alluded to, the problem of child pregnancy and alcohol being, being sold at school. It is against our culture to do such things. I support the bill.
Eh, ayazbulisele ngalenjigalaanga, ngulamla makela from Kthkath. Eh, Shobstewart Nehau Education Desk. We are here to support the bill. However, there's a few areas that we need to, to touch on quickly. Eh, that education, for instance, eh, eh, at the beginning is really about the child. And at home, child is about discipline. School is about education. However, eh, we feel uchulumende, we abantwanda otishala. Because in education, eh, training, otishala abafundi. Suwa uba abatini kabi fundisa, amangla namaparapara, drug users. But they are left to deal with these kids or in an environment to deal with these kids when they have not been trained about how to deal with these kids. So probably before we even talk about allowing or whether we agree or not to allow alcohol to be served in schools, the department probably needs to look at how do we train teachers to deal with stupifying eh, substances. So really, the department needs to look at, in fact, the government at large needs to look at what sort of a society do we need to, to develop with the upcoming generation? Thank you very much.
Sorry that, Nokolo, the last, you are supporting the bill? All right, thank you, ma'am. Next.
Eh, tigumishala me zikama upleme sayfan. Eh, desugwe Kthkathi ndizeji, just to support the bill. Eh, uswaguan, wea utchopa, u56. De go tuleje, lomkrimbo chwala, kesu la shetali es go tuleje. Na lomkrimbi wabantu ala aba pregnant because ge is kills as nasu. Eh, siya imulela le, le exercises zwayo so that we should eh, see quazu monakalisa ilazga izinforzitu. Eh, tileware yoba, i colleagues zambeseze zezes it is a waste of time. Eh, plus be careful, sigas pidi izindo esabagalo 1976. Apo umtwebe vela fa kumteeto. Atu fagelwa kumteeto, akume famakse fameniak, kaltu tetala mald. You know, we should avoid them. Eh, kuakola, utetma, kwezizido siwa 56, wa la tu 56. Akole ye, enche, oi molayo, chausa uti, dirijetayoga ido egus.
The previous speaker is Mr. Comisa from Kthkath. He came here especially to support the bill. Eh, from the first clause to the 56th clause, he just wants two things to be removed. The use of alcohol in schools and also the teachers dealing with pregnant children. That needs to be removed because the teachers lack the schools. Also expresses gratitude for the opportunity to express his view. He is just concerned about his colleagues who view this process as a waste of time. He says that it cannot be true that all 56 clauses are not beneficial to anyone. Thank you.
Mandizbulisele umpetlo shwenkubo. Nezi twalando ezila papa mkwetu, na kumtuonkenzin. Mnandi ngutwai takwabi. Unopala kasatu, Queenstown branch. Ilongo ne SGP, Enonesi, unopala we SGP, Enonesi. Dipakamela ukusapota i bill. Ekusapote ni kwam, dinayonako ama, ama solokanyana. Enditela Obama wakapono ngwe kakuse. Elokala, tinasi nenngake kui community zetu. Yowchwala ebantu anenibetu. Enditina ezukolweni, sifundisa izakono zobomi. Paya kui zakono zobomi, kuyat, kuyat, kuyat dueliswa. Izindo ez lungile, ema zichiwe ngabantu an. Uchwala ke asibuboni bukhona paya. Ngoko ke asibuni uku ba singatata lendo. Itatwan jenge uku ba isisi yobi si. Ipinde yizo utengi so eskolweni. Noko ba ifundraising na, ma kwenze ezinye injela zoku fundraiser. Okwesi bini? Ukukulelo kabantu an eskolweni. Sikaila uku ba noko singatwaliswa amazinki kukumoi. Sitrainelu uku fundisa. Uku ba uchulumende ufuna uku chonga ke lomba. Kunga, kunga khona, abantu aba trainiweyo. For uku chonga nanezo meko zinjalo. Siya usapota umkrimbi ograde R, utala isisililo. Kubake bapa eskolweni zetu aba bantu an. Paya benefita, kui nutrition aba ngabaluanga kuuso. Sitike pambilinga yoleyo. Noko ndizivandi ngenaya kuxalapansi, tinga kange ndimenshine indo eti. Siya tela man kuisiteti, asibizwa ngangusatu apa, sibizwe ipala mend. Ma kake siyekwete nasingu satu. Uku ba sibesitalelo Obama stetenjani, natis nama lungelo etu. Oku kibela, noko isitanisile umba we video. Ezigelezayo, ezitalela indogokwana masitini. Itandu ba ke footi, i infringe i rights zetu. Njenga bemiba semzansi Africa. Wa ye ke singwena indogokwana. Ninga ninga ichonga ke lendo ale video. Ngoba, uku ba be kusitwala video yenzuwe by the member of the ANC. Kesewa utala ngukitsokomez ndaben, i indwenku. Siya tala ke ma ichongwe na lena. Noko ba yenzuwe ngulomtu yenzile, namdina yola video. Ezobunwa inaboba ikona, engos.
Translation?
I support the bill. There are communities problems that we are having at schools. It's the liquor at schools. There are nevertheless good food for children that are being supplied, but there should be no liquor sold at schools. As well as drugs, misuse. Eh, children should not be supplied with this at school. I support the grade R system. Eh, the children should benefit out of this. And eh, we have interests that should be considered and as the parliamentarians had been here today. And eh, I also would like to mention about the video that was rotating here. Consideration about that issue should also be taken. We have rights as citizens of the RSA. That should be respected at all times. We will check these videos and we have these rights as a member of the ANC. I think.
Eh, last round. Say valalesos, say triplelesos, say triplelesoso. That's right. Last round. One. Two. Three, Baba Chaketa brown. Four, Chaketa eh, eh, black. Five, ma. Nendotwa, six. Seven, yes, yes. Wait a moment, am. Cici with the yellow, yes. Now we am butthurt. Amabut. Am. Amabut. The child with the red, yes. Amabut. Never. I think we have taken almost everybody. Siya iklebalaisos, say valamans. I was told to take you. I, I was told to make you speak. Stand there. Your people there have told me to allow you to speak, but I don't think you'll make that much difference. Exactly land.
Me, you'll make it. Me, ma, you'll see.
Exactly land.
Let's go for it.
Eli, it is.
Let's go for it.
Let's proceed.
Good day. Good afternoon. My name is Mathiannell. I'm from Waltersessulu, local municipality in the area of Bugasoor. I'm a ward councillor there for the DA in the 11 wards. Eh, we all know about the Bella Bill, but I'm also standing here as a concerned parent. I'm also a concerned parent when I read this Bella Bill. So when I read this bill, we are rejecting this bill in all the clauses there. However, I'm not going to touch because the time is limited and I like to talk. But I want us to look especially at clause 19, which talks about the minister can determine number of SGP members and how they are elected at public schools. We are rejecting this. We are saying the DA does not believe the minister should have the power to decide how many SGP members serve at public schools for learners with special needs. The minister should also not have the power to decide how the SGP members are elected at these schools. We say the MEC of the different provinces should continue to be allowed to make these decisions. Also, we are looking at clause 21, dissolution of SGP. We are totally against this. Eh, also, we also say that more consultation must be done eh, in the communities. No, I can't, no, I must talk now. Because this is also taking away the rights of the communities, of the constitutional right if they don't have a say in the Bella Bill. And not everybody can attend eh, from far places and even in the rural areas. So that is why we are rejecting this bill. Thank you very much.
Greetings to everyone. My name is Sesam Meza. I am the constituency coordinator of New Horizon, a staff member for the Democratic Alliance. Eh, I first want to express that I do not support the bill. Isiza tusoba ndinga isapoti le bill. One of them is the admission policy. I believe that SGP members are members of the communities and these are parents. And so I would believe that these people know best what is best for their kids. That's one. Secondly, about the language policy where the ruling party has made provisions on another, on an entirely different topic to say that some people of other classes should be excluded. I believe this is what would happen if we stripped the SGP powers from them and give them entirely to the failing government because that's the only track record we've got of government. It's that they are very good at failing. And so if we give them their powers, well, what happens to our schools? They fail. Eh, the, the, the third thing is clause 19 says the minister is to determine. The minister has failed. The minister cannot do anything right. And so now if we take the minister from a very busy schedule and make her responsible for such crucial matters, it is eh, to the detriment of the learners. Thank you very much.
Next.
Mandizbulisele ngale mfa kwemini. Ikama lamgozanele. Wakwa wotele. Di principal yasetalbozo SPS.
Any please, let's just please work together.
Eh, falbank, edugaton. Eh, ndia ambelanana le bill. Kotwa, andi ambelani nale yoku tengiswa, kochwala. Emasangweneskol. Ndiavuma konabunga tengisutwala ngabazali. Paya kshale, zebese nemalike eskolweni. Ndiakela ke uku ba, singenzii imbizu esfanana le. Ukuzesivotele. Kulendaba yabantu anaba kulelo eskolweni. Eh, andi vumelani nale eti, magube kumtuwa ubabelegisa eskolweni. Abantu aneskolweni batu nyalwe ufunda, ayu yoku lelo. Kasibeka umdu oyoba belegiisa siya kutazu ubaba kulele. Uban diga gen ditelege se abantu anabe etu, kubantu anababamba mishlop. Zange dambonumda na umdomshobo kulele, didendangak. Andadaba fiswa pickaba kulele. Masenzenumteeto, otu. Otu umduano kulelu uzagwenziwa ogu, no ku. Ukuzabanduanabetu ba totisi nani loku kulelo. Ayisibeka ban doanuban net. Eh. Kulenda ba yekoporal punishment. Di akela ukulumende wetu. Asuse indo abeki indo. Xalafiga lo umteto uthe ban doana mabanga betwa. Kasibeta itisha alaban doana kakshle. Sangabasjalis ngoba. Kwekni skolo kufaluke. Kwekni skolo kuposhumduan. Kwekni skolo umduan unikumsebenzo sebenze kati. Angavu muguya kati. As a result, abetu tisha. Ukulumende bagabaya kumteto mnye ofanaayo. Otu magu ngabet, magwenziwele. Kulumtembige. Wakuselegue eskolui. Di akela ukulumende. Enzis kolo song asben asachorit.
Pasalpeli little. Engosi. Translation? The previous speaker is Zanele Helele. He's a principal, he's from Falbank in Tugatoli. He supports the bill. Except the sale of alcohol on school premises. His advice is that parents should sell the alcohol in the community and bring the funds to school. And he also touched on processes like the one that we are engaged in today. This must not be used to gain votes. He also touched on the teachers being turned into midwives at schools. He said this promotes teenage pregnancies. He also made a comparison between white and black children and said he has never seen a white child pregnant. Unless they do hide them. And then he said instead of us encouraging these kids to get pregnant and helping them, we should get laws that deal with how to prevent the pregnancies. He also touched on the issue of corporal punishment. And he said the government should provide us an alternative. Because since the abolishment of corporal punishment, it is the children that are beating the teachers. And he also, his last point was on safety and security at schools. And he said that all schools should have security guards. Thank you.
Ma ndibuli se kui parlamente yetu. Ndibuli se bon kabantu. Ndiumtutuzelkaia. Di sugelenge kuskolokwana maskanya. And ya isapota yipelapiya. Di isapota ke kukonje ndawana andi kweni ndoba sngonkeeswa. Ulanla u itike aban doana sesinyansa elo mzali nubama kaya umdan eskolui. Inase kuge gonkeeswenda u iti umzali manganga yolash umdan eskolui. Ubahu te umzala kaya eskolui ma kotarwal police. Limse eskolui ngoba umzali funegemtongi umdanaki. Ngoba bazali ba felbo lala wano aneskolui ni bangapin de babonakali. Eh, oguesbiini. Ndiya isapota lo umteto ngoba. Eh, ukulumende wetu. Zanga yenzele ndo. Salaula ngemite tu esingayasiyo. Esitina mshlanje siyabulela nobage mshambi. Esinyesi indo zifika se kulelka xalafiga asbuleli ndoba. Ekwasi lukuzwenzelba no bandi abooswa anditing umteto. Ogwa kuzi we parati wetu sakalelo ngawa. Sawonge sawkanya sawkalase la lu. Londo yenzi kutinamshlanje. Siwazwa sweni ngakleba kumte tuwitu engosi.
I am Tutuzelikaia. Allow me to greet everybody present. I am from Linga. Children should not be thrown at school. Parents should look after their children. Our government is looking after us. I therefore support this bill. I thank you.
And the madam is buliselenam gola xachalwa namshlanje. Lo utatayo umeklenda wongala vakuemini ngunu okulunga kanongwa. I SGB member, maskanya, iilinga township. Andi teman ngamekonke njengomza. Abas eskolui ni. Nizo isapota le Bella Bill. Eh, imbangbandi isapotele Bella Bin kukono knense. Entenda ufuunda dakufumansebananga ba kusa baluluto kubanduanabetu. But kwa kona masolo chana matshile. Andi fikendatonda asokakekisa otishala. Peso kwa be kakekile ngabanduanabetu. Ndiya xaluku ti nyake itike nalue lo kulelo kubanduan. Otishala ba fundisi ban doana kukulelo. Aban otishala ba funsa banano kubekaka noboomne sakono ba peke pambili. Inase bagababize tinabazali ba banduan. Pay mpokoko inekaye lokshin. Kasibuzwe sitini statasi tinabano abetu. Sebe vebe sanezusuzuzosotishale eskolui. Otishale ya ke indo kukufunsumdanisikni techno ah upalwanchani na. Temadumfunsumpokoko payekaye. Ndi pinde kuinde yo uchoala ma butengswe eskolui. Abas okakekiso otishala. Otishala ba pepa pantuka ma bozo. Kunge namapara kiyaliwa kuzi. Group ne group age of eleven years. Sisame sipaka memisenye tu zonetotishale eskolui. Sebe zezonge zindisngalo osocial workers. Ma gabazamba tetina mane ede age of eleven years ukunyukel. Di afunukutatishala bazoni kutandu folunzi ma. Pino tishala kasa momotu sumduan. Sebe la ebantwa denumteto umteteleliyen utetelalumduan. Di xalukutatishala ma bayekubotwa. Ges trop siyakabuli engosi.
The previous speaker's name is Nokulunga Mongwa. She's an SGB member, she's also a parent. She came all the way to support the Bella Bill. And she says that a lot will be beneficial to the children. But there's a few issues that she feels will add pressure on the teachers. One of those issues, she said, is the use of alcohol on the school premises. There's already a problem with drug abuse and gangsterism. So this will add more pressure on the children. And she also says that the teachers are supposed to be teaching, not looking after pregnant children. The government should rather involve the parents and ask them for advice instead of loading the teachers. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairperson. Leadership protocol observed. Standing here is councillor John Shaw from Chautauqua District Municipality. Unfortunately, in the opposition side, driving this blue train, seeing a mattabane. We must deliver the services that were voted for. I'm standing here for the Democratic Alliance. We don't support this bill at all. And myself, as in daughter, andi isapoti intengo koyo. Luckily, a lot of stuff was said, but there's only two things that were spoken about the alcohol and the pregnancy at schools. We as parents send our children to school. Taking in mind where we send them, those teachers from eight to two, they'll be the parents at school. What the minister must do, there must be something implemented because the same, the same union members, they are going drunk to school, not going to school on a Monday or on the payday, impregnating our children at school. So something must be done about that because the same union members, they must be an example at school. Uh, what I agree with you is to bring the back the great R to schools. But it is very important. It's a very important tool slash slash foundation. The foundation, I'll come to the end of my presentation. But I'm only worried about the great Rs. As we all know, our government don't have money, especially in our province. There's not necessary, all the necessary equipment and start and resources are needed at schools. If we start great R, my prayer would be that the government have money. Or close to thirty years, we're still finding per toilets in the, in the district where I'm working. What about the great Rs when great Rs is implemented at all schools? That's my prayer. Coming back to the foundation, I said tool slash foundation. The foundation, what a meaning of foundation. When a child, we bring in great Rs at schools, that's a proper foundation because if you build your house, if your foundation is not hundred percent, your roof will fall off. As we can see at the moment in what's happening in our government. There was no foundation, there was never great Rs. That's why where we must learn about the read on the social media, what is happening in our countries. We are reading about our ministers. Our MECs. And even all those that got fraudulent degrees.
Your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you very much. You have represented them, you've tried, you've tried.
Ma ndibuli, ma nditate yetu ba ndibuli se. Kui parlamente esibona epam kwetu. Eh kutata indoba yeyabantu. Ikamalam. Ndi nguno sa undinchoko. Opuma pagula sabreji niya senongo. O ngusege lasihlalo. We SGB ubo cha ne SPS. Ndi miapa. Nizo kuyamke la ipil esifumanayo. Eh. Ndi, 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 ndi thasa. Witoala lotishala. Eh, sinotishala basleli be bambalwa eskolui. Be sokola. Ze kupinde kubekona abanduana abasika be kulelu eskolui. Atu ukulumende ma bachonga nenabo. Sikalase la indo okuba bambalwa infundo. Abasige lelikagushle kuyo kufundisa abanduanabetu nga kasana ngena obaba bambalwa. Andi kwa ndigeno okuba lia kwa kona ita xaloba. Benze umsebenze abanga ukaxelwanga. Wogu wa abanduana abaza be kulelu eskolui. Di kweni balikona itande lo la umsebenze. Oguesbiini. Sitagenena abanduana ngesio bis. Pa kwe zalali sikuzo. Kwa okuba nzi magakuluka ngo kuta kuno kufumane ka isiobisi soitwala kwalapa eskolui. Eh, otishala ba pepa amazebe. Ba pepa ilesi. Ngena ya abanduana abesa be fele isiobisi. No engosi akela, ndi akela ukulumende magasichotu ise eli itala lotwala eskolui. Unazi thobo ukulumende azibeshiayo aziyasaayo eskolui nizo ngi. Ah kukho bonokada. Ba kuxelwe ogokubama bachonge ezos thobo. Siyakela ukulumende ndoba. Magubekho onokada aban ngai tisanano kuchonga isthobo esifika zibekwe eskolui. Ezipinde zilashleke. Kupinde kupunegi ndoba. Magupinde kala lokalenu kuzanyo esithobo. Kandi ahde kukaxo onokada. Ngia kungekho. Kamleko engosi.
I greet all members present. I am from Ngobo region. Where the support of side of teachers. There are few struggling children want to be at school. There's no government support that we are getting. And at a school, there is a question of drugs and liquor at school. The teachers have to face all these problems. Children coming to school under those circumstances. We need tools. There's no properly trained securities to get used to look after all this at the school environment. I thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody, especially the table in front of us. Speaking is Zanywe Kapé from the Chrisany East District Office. Responsible for pre-primary as well as the remedial educator. I support the bill. But I have some comments or recommendations that I would like us to look at. First of all, I appreciate the point that the great R has come to the surface. Great R is a grade that is very often neglected due to the fact that it was not that forced to be at school. Right, the great R class is so supportive in a sense that it provides a child with language, with socialization, as well as with life skills and numeracy. Because that is also done in that grade. Secondly, there is something that I don't agree with, especially the point of alcohol. There, my friend, my colleagues have said a lot already about it. I wonder from the beginning, the people who started this thing of alcohol to school, what was in their mind? Because the school is a, is a center for education, is a developer. After all, we would not need to be here, all of us, if we wouldn't be here for the sake of the child. So I don't know what they had in their minds. But when you're looking at the pregnancy, looking with the, working with the kids, I've noticed that at the age when the grant is taken off, especially at the age of eighteen, that's a year, that's a year they start being pregnant, using drugs a lot. I don't mean they don't use at an earlier age. But very often that is because the grant has been taken off, taken away from them. And if that would be taken or care of, we would be much better covered. Homeschooling is very good also. But it needs supervision by the department to see. Because these children, at the end, they are the foundation, the citizens of the country. So they should not be excluded from what the Department of Education is supposed to.
Your time is up ma. Lipeli likwaiso. Next.
Good afternoon to everyone. My name is Sitelo Mle from Chrisany East. I am representing Napthosa. I am to say Napthosa register all our inputs in the Bella Bill, in the Portfolio Committee 2022. One of what we registered there was to say, if the EEA seventy-six of nineteen ninety-eight says a teacher is not allowed to have a relationship with the school that he or she teaches in, we want to submit by saying he must not or she must not have a relationship with the learners. Whether or regardless whether you are in that school or not in that school. It can't be that in twenty-seven years of democracy, you are saying we cannot change the laws. Laws are being changed every day because we are changing, the world is evolving. We can't have the same laws every time. Twenty-seven years since nineteen ninety-six, we carry on with the same laws. It can't be. Our language policy. I've got few points to mention. Twenty-seven years of democracy, when last did we ever have a language policy that fits us? Because ONG in a draft language policy. Because ONG in a draft language policy, twenty-twelve, that was passed in twenty-fifteen, says all the national key points must use all the official language. But I see your posters here say welcome in parliament. Nothing says wamkelekele, kuzigolelezo mlamtaeto. Your billboards are saying that. Or you look at our demographics and say, yes, welcome by the, what, what, in Africans. Because apa, setati English, setati Africans, setatis cause. It can't be who gave English its superiority in all other languages, we can't. Who said all the question papers, whether in university, whether in our schools, must be in English? Whoever gave that law? The English, the languages in the question papers, in the parliament, in the universities, must be written in all the languages that the people understand. If I'm Kosa, there must be a question in Kosa, a question in English, and a question in Africans. So that if I don't understand English, I'm given a little way to understand it's a Kosa. So that's why I'm supporting the bill to change the language policy. How come that a school that has got more than ninety percent of the students Kosa speaking, and you want to change those students and said, your first language must be in English, your first language must in Africans? And we say in the twenty-seven years.
Esalipeli lebut. Engos. Next.
My name is Jagua Pani. I'm from Congress of South African School Governing Bodies. And one thing that I want to put forward is that I am a product of Bantu education, which was imposed to us by the apartheid system or the apartheid government, which was declared a crime against humanity. And that was inflicted upon us by whites. So by looking at this bill, at section forty-two of the preamble of this bill, it says it wants to redress the injustices of the past. And after looking at that, as Congress of South African School Governing Bodies, we said we support this bill. And we support everybody who came here before us to support this bill. But we were very surprised by those who doesn't support this bill. Those, there is a video that is making rounds here. It seems like everyone is talking about that video, but it doesn't give, they don't give it a face. The person who is, who has done, the character in that video is Miss Sukers. Is Miss Sukers. And we are going to lodge a complaint about that person. And we think the honorable parliamentarians will also take steps against that person to discipline him. Section five, four and six, five and six of the amendments, try to raise or recognizes that there are people who are abusing their powers that have been bestowed upon them, especially the SGBs, to discriminate against our people, especially when it comes to language and admission policy. So now the HOD is going to look at those policies as to each, they accommodate the people who are living within that district. Because whites in particular, they have used or manipulated their powers that have been bestowed upon them, especially whites. That's why we are not surprised that each and every white who is standing, who is going to come, even the one behind me, is going to say he or she doesn't support the bill. We are not surprised. We are supporting this bill hundred percent. Whites may come with their cattle, may come with their chickens, may come with everybody to say they don't support. They cannot defeat us, we support this bill.
Fine, thank you. Honorable Chair, respected members of the Portfolio Committee and fellow citizens. My name is Karen Soudy. Thank you for this opportunity to voice my rejection of the Bella Bill. I'm sure you will all agree that children are a gift from God and a blessing to their families. The Bill of Rights, section twenty-eight-two, states that a child's best interests are of paramount importance in every matter concerning the child. Parents who know their children better than anyone else are the best equipped to know what their children's best interests are and to make decisions accordingly. Regarding my children's education, I do not believe that the head of department who is unacquainted with my children is in a position to know what their best interests are. As a home educating parent, I therefore reject clause thirty-seven, which proposes to give the HOD this authority. Next, I would like to highlight participatory democracy. Meaningful public engagement is an essential part of the lawmaking process. If all the views of the public have not been considered, public engagement has not been meaningful. Since publishing the Bella Bill in twenty-seventeen, the home education community and our representatives have tried to engage with the DBE on the contents of the bill. Unfortunately, there has been very little interaction, and we feel that we have not been at all engaged in a meaningful way. Parents of schoolchildren are represented by SGBs. SGBs and unions are represented in various structures of the National Education Policy Act, but home education is not represented. Our province does not even have a joint liaison committee between homeschoolers and the provincial education department. Even if we did, the JLCs have had no input in the Bella Bill. So we do not feel that participatory democracy has been carried out in the drafting of this bill. Laws should not be made about us without our input. Furthermore, I am opposed to the department having any authority to conduct home visits to home educating families. This would be an invasion of our privacy. If thorough research had been done, the department would have found out how we monitor and assess our children's learning. Alternatives to home visits could be explored, for example submitting evidence of our children's learning. But this would need to be done through proper consultation. I reject the Bella Bill and I propose that clause thirty-seven is separated from the bill. It can be reconsidered only after proper research has been done and once thorough consultation and public engagement has been done with the home educating community. I thank you.
Good day, ladies and gentlemen. I am Mr. Aimolele from Congress of South African School Governing Bodies. We are representing the SGBs across South Africa, in non-provinces of South Africa. The reality of the matter is, we black people will never be loved by white people because they will always reject anything to do with black people. They will never support anything to do with black people. You know what? Because they are still having the chest pain. The sooner they've realized that they will never take our government back, the better. They've taken, they've stolen our country for more than three hundred and something, yes. But now they are feeling pain, they want to take it back. That's why they are rejecting everything, even if how legit it can look, but they are rejecting anything. Number two, I heard people here, they came here and they generalize the members of the parliament here. There is an implicated person here. Ronnie, Mr. Ronnie, yesterday you denied me to point fingers on the culprit. Culprit is a culprit, we must point fingers on the culprit. There is a Miss Suker here. The video is circulating all over social platforms, social medias. And then it's like it's a business as usual. No one who's doing anything about it, she's misleading people. She's standing boldly and telling South Africans not to vote the bill. I don't know where she have taken that oath. She broke the code of the parliament. She must be charged with the serious misconduct. We as Congress of South, Kosa SGP, we are going to chair. It can be today. We are going to chair with misconduct because she broke the code of the parliament. I don't know which, which section that allows you as the parliamentarian to stand here and campaign for your parties.
Your time is up, okay. Your time is up. Ma'am, can you come and speak? She's afraid, I think. All right. Yes, sir. Okay, thank you so very much. N'goska kula, n'goska kua za tetap, n'ya n'gos, siabule. Yeah, okay, siabule, n'goska kula ba, n'gos dimfunaj, dimwangelik, egamlam. And yes, we do reject the Bella Bill, but not on, not on stands of which was spoken of earlier. We especially reject clause two and clause eight, twenty-seven and forty-one, as none of these act in the best interest of the child. But I very strongly reject clause thirty-seven of the Bella Bill. And just to make it clear, that those who have opposed homeschooling that have spoken here, a lot of them were actually speaking and referring to microschools and not to homeschooling, just showing that there is a great lack of understanding of what homeschooling actually is. There were very shocking words uttered during a two thousand and seventeen Council of Education Ministers meeting, which said, the implication of scrapping the home education should be explored. While those shocking words highlighted a disturbing sentiment towards home education. A member of the council suggested that if banning home education prove challenging, that they could cause discouragement by parents by burdening them with financial responsibilities. The idea was to create obstacles, ensuring that home education becomes a difficult and tiring path to take. This makes us question the true purpose behind the annual assessments requirements within the Bella Bill. Does it genuinely aim at safeguarding the rights to education for all home educated learners? Or is it an attempt to impose a substantial financial burden, rendering home education unfeasible for the majority of South Africans? These annual assessments, has there been any assessment as to what the cost would actually be? And what the pressure that would put upon the government with already resources that are already stretched so far? Is that how many kilometers will have to be spent riding around when that money can be spent so much more wisely? Rather use that money, use it to hire more teachers, to build more classrooms, so that children can actually get some sort of individual attention within our big schools, attention that can help them to do better at school, instead of trying to make things more difficult on parents who have chosen to do homeschooling. Because, be it because of finances or any other reasons, be it because of special needs of the child or personal convictions, whichever it is, it is children you don't have to worry about because they are already being taken care of, which frees the government up time-wise and financially to actually take care of the millions of schoolgoing children, whom of many have parents that just could not care any less about them. We work with these kids, we know their pain. And the government could do so much good and make such a difference in these children's lives. And they could rather focus their attention where it is really needed. Your time is up, ma'am. Your time is up. Esalipeli. Next.
Afternoon, program director and your collective. Standing here in front of you is Mr. Sandilem Bizweni. I am a teacher and a member of Sato in good standing. The first thing that we are here for is to support and endorse the bill. However, there are some clauses that we feel strongly that they need to be worked on so that they fit the situation that we are finding ourselves in. The first one, as I'm standing here, I am highly sober. So we cannot allow our schools to be turned into places where some body or any body within the very same canvas can access alcohol because we know what alcohol does to people. Also, we strongly oppose to the issue of homeschooling because homeschooling will not address the issues that our country is faced with. Also, the quality of education that is being given to the learners, nobody is aware of, and it cannot be certified by the department. Before I sit down, I would have made a big mistake by not going to the person who has been circulating the video. I think that the government has to take action towards that person. He has shown an extreme levels of dishonesty and distrust because what she is saying in the video is total the opposite of what is expected of this committee of yours. We'll be happy if we get a report that what happened here on the video is being rectified and the person has been taken to task with that. Also, there was, I will call him a young boy of DA, who came and played politics here. We are not here about politics, but we are here about the future of the young kids. He cannot come here and accuse us, the members of Sato, as people who are drafts when it comes to thinking, we've got our own minds. We know what we are talking about, education is the area where we are specializing. We therefore want to warn DA that they must not confuse issues. If they want to play politics, time for politics will come. Twenty twenty-four will be here, they must go around, rally for votes. We'll see if his confusion will expand to the people who are the voters of this country. Before I sit down, I hope he's still here. But if the person is not here, his friends or his colleagues, they must.
Your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you.
My name, my name is Nathan, and I reject the Bella Bill.
Closer to the mic, come closer to the mic. Next.
Okay, okay. First of all, I want to greet you all. My name is Estro Lintoi from Wacha Tari Tarkastat. First of all, I want to start. First of all, I want to start with the dropouts in schools. I think our government already failed in 2004, where it changed our curriculum, where our learners were doing needlework, home economics, woodwork. And I think those things could have take our learners out and give them some jobs. And why are our learners now dropouts? If you can look back, the more learners are dropouts because not all learners are mathematically minded. And now you force our learners to do maths. Another thing that will let our learners now being dropouts, I think it will be the English. If you can look now that most of our learners staying with grannies, speaking Korsa, speaking Afrikaans, came home with, with homework that is English. What will that child do with that homework when that granny is speaking Korsa and Afrikaans and can't help him? So I think we must go and look back where we fail our learners who is doing more things with their hands like needlework, home economics. There are now chairs that I can, that they can be reached out for, but now the learners drop out because of the curriculum that was changed in 2004. If you can look back and see how many learners are now dropouts from that time because of they can't function, now you put English as an first, as a first language to our learners, that will make them more dropouts. And those learners will drop, I, I, I promise. Because if you be dragged to something that you don't understand, you will at the end of the day say to yourself, "Let me just go and sit at home and be a dropout." Where our learners can do English as an additional language. We don't take English out, but we let them teach in their home languages and do English in our additional language. Another thing that I want to raise is the SGP. We can't take SGBs out of schools because the SGP is there to help the schools, especially with signing checks. We already have HODs taking empty blank checks for SG, for, for SGP people to sign. What more were we waiting for when we only give the HOD the power to take over in the schools? That's all what I want to say, thank you.
Are you supporting or not supporting the bill?
Part of it I'm supporting and part of it I'm not because from the grade R part I will support because I believe that those grade R teachers are doing the most.
All right, all right. You are partially supporting the bill.
Honorable Chair, members of the Portfolio Committee and fellow South Africans. My name is Kirsten Southie, I am 12 years old. I am here today to reject the Bella Bill, especially Clause 37. I have been home educated by my parents. I am thankful that I have been able to learn in a secure environment without stress. I can thrive because I am learning at my own pace in my home where I feel safe and relaxed. The Children's Act says that we must listen to the voice of the child and take it into consideration. In our home education, I see how this works in reality. I have a say in what I wish to study and how I want to study it. My parents and I discuss our wishes and concerns. We weigh up the options together, we find the best solutions, then we plan our learning and enjoy it. This is one of the ways in which I have learned the value of participatory democracy. It can be summed up in the phrase, "Nothing about us without us." It is one of the cornerstones of our constitution. Unfortunately, this is not the way the Department of Basic Education has dealt with us as home educators in developing Clause 37 of the Bella Bill. We have not had a chance to have our voices heard while the bill was being written. There have not been meetings where both sides could discuss their wishes and concerns or find solutions together. There should be no law about us without us. I am also against, against Clause 37 because home visits by the department are an invasion of our privacy. Our home is our safe place and nobody should be allowed in if we have not invited them. The state does not know what we are doing because they did not do research. I ask that the state does full research about home education before making...
Your time is up.
Good afternoon everyone, my name is Wusum Zikobeni from Sterkstrom. I'm a business person, I support the bill. But there are, there are two things that I don't support. The pregnancy in our schools, I'm not happy with that. The alcohol being served in our schools, I'm not happy with that. Liquor board will never allow alcohol to be sold to the person under the age of 18 years. I do drink, I know what the problem with alcohol. No one would ever concentrate with a hangover in our schools. And no one would ever... Currently, currently we're standing with a 32.9% unemployment globally behind, after, after Nigeria. So if, if you support it, then we want to increase it. Also, there's one thing that I'd like or request from, from the government to absorb the, the contract educators, to be the permanent educators, especially those that are qualified to be absorbed, to have all the benefits that other teachers are getting. Lastly, I would like to emphasize something that our experience has seen here. This thing of putting politics here, this platform is not for politics. Especially when there were times I was listening to the guy that was standing here comparing, uh, Mario Law and Lungisi. Now we're comparing two different things, oranges and bananas. We're still having kids that are going to school barefoot, which is those kids are underprivileged. Please, keep your jokes or whatever it is with your friends, with your political friend, whoever. This is not for that, thank you.
Are you supporting, Bab, the bill? Hundred percent, thank you very much.
You're right. Good evening. I'm the last one to talk today. I think it's a privilege of being a pastor. I'm here not to talk on behalf of the pastors, but I'm here to talk on behalf of the community. My name is Mluleki Chanelo from here in Queenstown. I have two things to put forward here. Number one is my disappointment on the community of South Africa, which is reflected directly by what is happening in this hall. This is a policy matter that is gonna affect generations to come. But we are interpreting it based on who is on the ruling seat of government. Your hatred comes like... And yet I do not know where I will be putting my allegiance in three years to come. I spoil this now, tears down the line, I'm the recipient of the same hatred that I was throwing to whoever is on the governing seat. So let us be careful, I'm a pastor. Number two, I am looking at this, uh, this 56 points here and I see that this is a very good bill. Basic education laws amendment bill that is brought to us. But I'm only asking for you to, to, to check on two things to assist us as the communities. Number one, this question of corporal punishment, it is not clear really, at least even if you can give just one hint as to what direction the teachers should take because really they are being beaten by these children and we don't really appreciate that. We're doing counseling all the time. Number two, this question of, um... What is this? I, I, I didn't write it down now. But i, 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 it, it, it has to do with the, with the liquor in schools. We nearly rejected some good things in the past only because they were brought to us half... I don't know how to put it, but it's, it, it was just given to... And yet we need to go deeper. I would, I would ask you at least to elaborate further on what you mean by this liquor within the school premises. It's not that there is no liquor in school premises when there are activities. I know I was once a teacher and we were having sports during those times. So when there is sports, the teachers are organizing liquor and they drink at school. So if this is, is directing to that, then that is fine. I accept this Bella Bill, thank you.
Let me thank every board. Komani, thank you very much. Eastern Cape, thank you very much. Chris Aani, Sia Bulela, thank you so much, Sia Bongga. I province here to Yokke Bella Lee. I Eastern Cape, Gomso Siay Kabeza Elalomsebenz in Port Elizabeth. That will be the last public hearing tomorrow. In Kabech. So, after we have concluded that public hearing, we are going to consolidate a report of provinces. And a report of provinces is gonna say, for instance, here in Eastern Cape, what are the people of Komani in this hall have said with regards to this bill. And based on M Tata, Nasakabecha, we are going to consolidate a report that says Eastern Cape views on the bill are 1, 2, 3, 4, based on the clauses that you have mentioned. And also based on the fact that you are supporting Eastern Cape or rejecting the bill. So what you have said is going to be part of the national report. Ourselves here, you have seen that we have been quiet, listening to you. So our time is going to come for us to deliberate on this matter. And that's what we have said from day one, that members must give you an opportunity to speak. Then we are going to deliberate as members on this matter because we are part of this process, all of us. We've listened to yourselves. And we are going to take it to Parliament by of course removing, because there will be DBE in the process, we are going to remove what you want us to remove, we are going to add what you want us to add. And then a consolidated report based on the amendments that would be there from Clause 1 to Clause 56 will be tabled in Parliament for Parliament to take a decision. So, with that as it may, let me thank you very much. It is weekend, you are busy, you've got your own schedules,